So if you go to the store, it is there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm recording right now.
We are recording. So open it. All right. Hello. Then I I'm gonna open the meeting. And we'll save the normal meeting script for when we convene, but I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session to be reconvened.
Move to enter into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Director of Works to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public party and the chair, so declares. I I I A F F locals, one nine four seven firefighters. To consider the purchase exchange, police or value of real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public party, sixty-one summer street.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
I'm a yes. David?
Yes.
And Armand?
Yes.
We will go to executive section to reconvene afterwards in open meeting.
Away. Kristen.
I've received. Chris?
Sorry.
No worries.
I have it recorded on Facebook, so.
Okay. All right. Uh, all right. Yes, so we've received a volume of correspondence. We know that there is a fair amount of concern about the solutions and the not just the short term, but also the medium and long term solutions for the bleachers. So I would like to start by inviting Town Administrator Greg Johnson to give us an update on what has happened since our last meeting and including what is currently in place in the field and what our uh, medium term solution is in terms of um, uh, making improvements to the existing structure and just a little bit about what the long term solution.
Like, yeah. So the school department and I think spearheaded by the athletic director, Mike Aria, who I think was at the last, we're being, y'all may have introduced, I'm not sure, but um. They took the initiative. They they got both the temporary bleachers, which had been there for a couple of weeks, and then recently, I think as of Friday, they had acquired and installed. Not sure what the correct terminology is for, but more global, more robust, uh, bigger, better bleachers, but do come at a cost. Which is, I think, an important factor, of course, in all of these considerations, both for near term, midterm and then long term planning. I think I think it was discussed at the last lightboard meeting, but those temporary bleachers, the original ones were about eight thousand dollars a month, if I recall.
I believe that was the figure from last time.
Good, all right, good. And then, uh, but the current features, which was provided by Mars scaffolding. Um, the quote that I saw was for twenty-one thousand dollars. So the town is now town as a whole, right? Because we're we're in partnership with the school department. Um, we are supporting through maintenance, um, in our memorandum agreement with the school department, we provide maintenance facilities, but the town as a whole um, has now spent about thirty thousand dollars towards these these bleachers, the the both sets of temporary bleachers. So that's the near term, right? So we do the the current, we do have bleachers set up there um, for for the athletic operations. For the midterm, um, which might be addressing the status of the currently closed bleachers. We have engaged with Leroy. Actually, I'm not entirely sure what their official title is, but they're engineering firm Leroy something, Leroy Consultants Camera, but they're one of the house doctors that we have a contract with. Um, and we reached out to them and they went on site, they engaged with both the school department and the town facility staff, and they gave an estimate today, but we actually need or yesterday, but we need to have them amended because there's a couple more items that we wanted to take a look at. They will um, do an assessment, evaluation of those current features and then give us recommendations to make modifications, improvements to those bleachers, which might satisfy the building code. Um, particularly those codes applicable to athletic facilities, um, which is a slight variation of the standard building code. And our coding inspector today reviewed those initial uh, quote from Leroy again for that evaluation, but then we will, we uh, we'll go back to Leroy and say there's a couple more moderate pieces that we need to that quotes that and we will and we will move forward and all like with Leroy doing that evaluation. Then when we have those, uh, that evaluation and those recommendations, we can do the procurement process as to make whatever whatever we want to do uh, to those current features, both the home side and separately with visitor side. So we we need to have our options. And that's that's what this engineering firm is going to give us. It'll give us a view of what we can do, what options we we might want to consider. Um, then I imagine it will be a discussion amongst, um, town administration, town departments, uh, engage the select board, school. We may maybe move us to engage in some sort of advisory group. Um, that way we have a little more public opinion, public input as to what we want to see addressed to the current features. Because we also need to consider the cost, of course, and investment in those current features, how long we want those current features to last, which two, five years, we're not sure, because that would then tie into was the long term plans, which you'd asked. And um, would that be a complete replacement of those existing features? I suspect that's probably true, but to what degree? Not sure. And then how to fund all that. And that's that's obviously that's one of the largest kind of considerations. So I I hope to get that evaluation, I'm sorry, the quote for the evaluation based on modifications in the near future. And um, and then we'll have to go from there because depending on what they recommend and what how far we want to go with, you know, the scope of the work, we want to do those current features, that's going to determine timeline. We're getting closer and closer to, you know, construction season will last so far until winter time, and then we have to pick it up in spring. So it's kind of an ongoing, we're meeting regularly, focused up.
Questions?
Yes. Um, so the question about about Leroy, so is that you said that there was a quote, and is that a quote for the evaluation or do they do evaluation and they're providing a quote about what they found?
The former. So they went on site to to just get a look at what we were talking about.
Okay.
Then they're gonna quote us as to how much it would cost them to do the whole evaluation process regulations.
Oh, right.
Yeah, it's kind of a lengthy process, Chris. This is.
Um, so I realize I realize money is a factor. I I do, I do understand that. But my question is, why wouldn't we just move forward with new bleachers as opposed to trying to fix the ones that we have now?
Fair.
Is there a, like, so we'll we'll just get all the options and kind of explore it then, is that kind of?
I agree. Yes, um, also I have, uh, you know, depending on on the results of if the board approves the final warrant for special time meeting and then goes to town meeting. And and if this and town voters, um, approve the redesignation of that appropriation of hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, then we have money. So we don't, I don't have, one, a sense of have a sense, I could guess how much new bleachers might cost, but I don't have a funding plan. But I do have a bucket of money, so to speak, with all those contingencies that that we can address towards those current features. I don't disagree. I would like to put our money into what is going to get the better return on that investment. But, you know, if we're if we're if we're breaking it down into near term, mid term, and then long term, that's that's how we, that's how we saw it. But this this particular firm, I've already also tested the next phase, which is working with the town to 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 design new bleachers. So if if it comes out that we just want to move to that phase, uh, potentially we could.
My concern is just, obviously, as I can understand it, you know, hundred seventy-four thousand dollars is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money when you come, when you're talking, right? Exactly. But that's the question is, you know, should we use that to design? Because because we because we're needed to design too. But so moving forward, the other question I have is who? So who should be moving forward? Because I know that that's kind of a sticking point as far as is it the school department or is it the town?
Uh, that's a good question. So my perspective is that we support the operations in this case of the schools. What our our responsibilities is the maintenance of the athletic facilities and athletic facilities serve the purpose of successful athletic program of run by the school department at the presumably the the policy direction of the school committee. So um, so I don't tell them what kind of bleachers they need and and how big they should be and what time to turn on the lights. They tell us. So, uh, I I've used this anecdote a number of times that uh, any other good way to sort of understand that relationship is that we don't know when the football season starts, they tell us, and then and then we figure out when to paint lines. Like, that that's a sort of like thing that we have with them. Um, so I've I've and I that understanding I've conveyed a number of times in Brian Austin, I think we're on the same page, the superintendent of schools. Um, and um, I think through that athletic director sort of like, you know, kind of pushing this through and and sort of honing responsibilities of the other program, they'll say, this is what we're looking for, this is what we need to be successful in programming. And and to their credit, that's why they, that's why they acquired the the two sets of temporary features to be able to be successful.
Okay, so that so that's the question I have, though, is so we, the town, will find direction from the schools? So if someone if someone wants to to direct their questions about the bleachers or suggestions or anything like that, advocate, who are they advocating to? They advocate to the schools?
Greg Johnson's opinion? Because is that the loaded question?
Agreed, but but I'm trying to like, trying to.
So I'm here, advisor. I would advise that it should come from the schools. It is, it is a, in in my perspective, and I think there's some legality to this as well, is a school asset that that the town helps maintain. But it's, um, if the schools decided to not do a football program, I would argue it's not worth it to paint the lines in football. So they they drive our operations to maintenance, to make their programs successful.
Okay, all right. One clarifying thing I'd like to comment on, um, based on my review of the um, the current pricing that we're paying, you had mentioned we're already thirty thousand dollars in.
Yeah.
The eight thousand dollars, my understanding, covered us for a month for those smaller bleachers that were there. The twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, from my understanding, covers us from September twenty-third, which was last Friday, through November twenty-fifth, which is Thanksgiving. So it seems like these bigger bleachers are a hell of a bet a deal than the small little three rows that they got the first time around.
That's not right.
Because we're getting them for three months, a much bigger set than we got with the other one. So I think that's that in itself, I think, should be advertised because we did a better job at getting a better product. And, you know, they look better, they are more, they hold more people.
Yeah.
And I hope our people decide to move to that side.
Yes, please use them.
I I agree that.
All right. Um, how, do you have a question, Chris? How long do we expect these improvements, if we put in that solution on the way to full replacement, how long do we expect those improvements to last?
Oh, to last? Oh, years.
So.
Um, I I can't exactly say for certain. It's my hope, except as a customer of others. Um, as I said earlier, I think two to five years.
Two to five.
We don't, we don't have, we don't know what the, how big new bleachers may be, we don't know how much they cost, we're not helping them. So you want to tell us how long it lasts?
Once, once we put in these these improvements to the current features, how long, how long will they last until we need to?
But we could then be, assuming we went that route, we should then begin immediately with a group talking about how to proceed rather than putting it on a shelf, like we tend to. And then suddenly there's a problem in three years, and I, oh crap, we need.
No, with that, a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars already appropriated, that 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 was the plan.
Yeah.
Since I, I'd already told the school superintendent to engage with the athletic department to say, like, now we need to get it, and we have house doctor engineer, work with them, design it.
And that also gives us a chance to work on the financing aspect, work with CPC, work with the state, work with uh, volunteerism as well as, uh, private donations and get a funding plan, not only a building plan, but a funding plan.
Well, I'll note that the capital planning committee had already been going along these lines. That's why we have the one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that we can reallocate if we choose to do so at town meeting. And once again, I'll I'll, I think if we had the original capital planning committee and we had funded them correctly, we might not even be in this. Or if we had started that group earlier and funded them correctly all throughout, we might not be in this situation, we might have been able to get it. Now, we can only do so many what ifs, but I think it speaks to the importance of making sure that we, and in conjunction with what we mentioned at the budget subcommittee meeting, take a look at our financial policies and seek to adhere to them. And I know there's some disagreement about every single one, but especially around capital planning. Um, and I know we had that capital budget in our operating budget as recommended by our own financial policies two years ago, and we took it out last year and moved into free cash. I was vocal against that, and I'll be vocal against it this year. Uh, if we decide to do that, because we need that maintenance budget in here to prevent exactly this sort of situation in the long run, and that's not going to save us for next year, it's going to save us five years down the road, ten years down the road, et cetera, et cetera. But we need to get in the habit of putting in money to that capital budget. And the capital planning committee, you're you're asking for a group to discuss it, they're meeting right now, and they correctly identified the bleachers as a top priority. That's why we have the one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that we already allocated. Uh, and we can. Uh, and we can reallocate at this town meeting. So once again, I just want to advocate for putting the capital. Uh, budget into the operating budget according to our financial policies, which we originally had, and again, it may not have been in time to. Stave off this particular problem, but these are the sorts of problems that it'll prevent in the long run.
Also, can I, I've got a note, I've got some note from, from way down the line. Preparers could last, uh, five to ten years, so.
That, that would be part of that assessment, I assume, that, that the house doctor would complete.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Any other questions from the board?
I just have one more question about the, um, so this, the CP, the CPC CPA. Um, notice of intent for bleachers.
I, yeah.
Um, I know that you had included, and I know that, that, and that's, and honestly, that's what speaks, that speaks to my question. Trying to drill down as to whose responsibility is it? So is that something that the, you know, someone on the town side is supposed to be providing? Or is that something that the school is working on?
Are you talking about just the sponsoring of the, of, of a proposal going that we're going to talk about later on in the agenda?
There's another agenda items, but.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I, yeah, I wanted to give the public a chance to see this.
Oh, I think talking about, like, not going back to the topic of bleachers is a good idea.
Probably makes sense, doesn't it?
Then let's, want to use cover it and when we get to it, we can.
Okay, but also, I, I understand. But, um, to, to Justin's work. I had done the original draft of the notice of intent according to the, uh, community preservation committee's guidelines. I gave that draft to the superintendent's office, who, who I, I believe is working, um, with the athletic director. And they then drafted a, uh, cover alert to the notice of intent. And I, and my belief is, but I can't, I can't speak for the superintendent's office, is that they will, um. Sort of flush out the rest of the notice of intent, which is for the public's understanding, it's the first step, um, kind of get your foot in the door, like it is. CBC, that evolves presumably with feedback from the CDC into an application. But the first step is, and I think it's due next week, is a notice of intent to the CDC. And then, um. Uh, so we're, so we're continuing work with them. I think there, I had drafted two, um. Versions of a notice of intent, one was to see if the CDC would be willing to put money to, or even able to put money towards. Those improvements that we were referring to earlier to the current bleachers, and then a separate notice of intent. Um, towards the replacement of the bleachers with new bleachers. Um, and I, so, so I, to your question, just in my, which speaks to my, my earlier sort of. Uh, advice is that it should come from the schools, but I think it should be endorsed by the school committee. And, uh, and I think in tangent, in tandem with the select board, recreation commission, I think everybody should have.
And I, I do apologize because I kept seeing that on my, when I was checking the, uh, the agenda, I kept seeing bleachers twice and I. No, why didn't I see, so I, I apologize if that's further down.
No, no, no.
Well, I, I, and I would agree that, um. That it should be a townwide effort, schools, town, and whoever can jump on board to help when we go forward. But I'm most, uh, I'm most interested in making sure we get some type of a notice of intent. To the CPC sooner rather than later. Who sponsors it, put that notice of intent in, really doesn't matter because that can change as long as the, the notice is there.
Would, would the board be interested in, I saw this, Mr. Chair, if you.
Go ahead.
I've been kind of had, don't remember when the due date is for the notice of intent to the CPC, but. This third, so Monday? So the board has a meeting on Tuesday, so if you want to do a public endorsement, like a, kind of a motion to, to approve. A- as I wrote this, this motion, that, not exactly like this, if, if you want to do some sort of like, oh, endorsement of the notice of intent. Wait, I don't have that, I don't have that for you to do, like, I don't have the actual NOI from this, from the schools yet. So you would be doing the, the concept of, of a notice of intent to the CPC, but not the, not the actual.
Is the CPC deadline set by stat, state statute, or is it just set by our local CPC?
Probably, you can add, but I think it's probably CPC.
If, if it's ours, local CPC, can we ask them for a little bit of leeway in allowing us to have the time to get it a day late?
But also, it's, the notice of intent is just that, and it's not the application, so, so it could, it could.
It's just a notice of intent.
Yeah, right.
Uh, but they still have a deadline to get that, because I know they've got their own process, but looking for us, can, can we be guaranteed that we're not going to be. Knocked out until next year because we missed it by.
You want to ask John?
Yeah, John, can.
You're, you do not have to respond, but if, uh, could you give a? Is, is David's understanding correct from what you just heard? You're on mute, you're on mute, and, and when you come off mute, could you just introduce yourself real quickly?
Uh, sorry, yes, we, we've accepted applications a little bit late in the past, so.
That's great.
Okay, all right, so there's a little flexibility, but we don't want to. Okay, okay, um. I'll, I'll make one additional note, I, as far as I know, there is no sudden one time event that caused bleachers to fall into disrepair. So I do think we need to, and, and I think the correct response was, you know, immediately make sure we have, uh, that short and medium and, and full coverage of bleachers. As soon as we're able to get them in, which town staff did, but I do think we need to go and take a look and see what happened that all of a sudden bleachers. Were all of a sudden found to be unusable overnight, right? Nothing, nothing in town that, that big, important, or expensive should fail overnight from normal wear and tear without, um. More long-term warning for us, and so we need to take a look at what happened more closely. And see what kind of policies or procedures or changes need to be put in place so that these sorts of events don't happen in the future again, and so that's. That's in parallel, right? I mentioned earlier, it's more of the fiscal one to make sure we get these things, but the actual enforcement of the codes. I want to make sure that we have a, an understanding of what happened so that we can seek to prevent it from happening in this way in the future, because it's caused a, a lot of. I would believe unnecessary staff time to figure out a solution and financial burden to put in these temporary fixes while we work on a long one.
Hey, Jeff, I just want to chime in for a second, because I want to back you up on what you just, uh, said. It is important that we do a better job of maintaining, um, and I think that's something that you're hinting on to. Um, I think we probably should have seen this coming a while back, if that was the case, if it was maintained properly. And who wasn't, who was in charge of inspecting those bleachers on an ongoing basis? And something that Justine brought up, and I, this is a partnership between the town and the schools. But whose responsibility what really was to keep an eye on what's going on with those bleachers, so we don't get to this point? Um, and that's something that I think we need to be more cognizant about, just in general, about anything to do, whether it's in schools in town, we got to do a better job of maintaining.
Any comments other from the board before I open it up to public comment? All right, I will open it up to public comment, Natasha, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, Natasha Rivera, Nine Turn Road. I just wanted to share that the school committee will be deliberating on the notice of intent, uh, Thursday. So we will be, um, discussing that and the way as it has been presented to the school committee. Was that it is a collaborative effort between the school department and the town. So I, I would, um, be, I think that is the understanding that we would be discussing in that frame. If there is feeling otherwise, it would be helpful to know in advance that that's not the desire of the select board. To proceed in a collaborative manner as far as sponsoring the notice of intent.
I think for, and, and I'll speak for myself, I think for the notice of intent, a collaborative approach is, is more than appropriate. Um, do any disagreements? Yeah, absolutely.
I think my concern Natasha was more that I wanted to make sure if someone was doing it, so I wanted to make sure that if it, you know. So I didn't want it to be like, everybody thought somebody else was doing it and if that missed.
And totally, totally appreciate it. I think we, uh, we, we took that takeaway from the, um, town budget subcommittee meeting, right? And, um, and I know that, um, with the input from, um, our town administrator, Greg has provided work with Brian for language. To support that, so I think it was intended always in that regard, because there are certain areas of maintenance and specialty that the school department doesn't have. Under their, you know, in their wheelhouse, when it comes to proceeding with, um, construction and on, on all those areas. So I, I think it would be more beneficial to the town to proceed in that regard, um, if, if at all possible. So that would be, I think, the endorsement we would want to do.
Yeah, once the notice of intent is in, um, then I think we need to sort of swivel in some way to decide who's going to drive it. As far as going forward, leading the charge and being sort of the lead dog as opposed to having everybody chiming in. And having possibly confusion or mixed messages at that stage. So once the notice of intent is in and we have a plan, then I think. We and possibly even the school committee steps aside and lets somebody else, uh, whether it be a recreation or some other entity. Who knows who that might be, maybe it is the school committee, but somebody else to sort of take the reins, um, so that there's one lead. And not, uh, a, a bunch of chefs in the, in the kitchen.
I, I, I agree, and I, I wonder if there might be an instance to have a tri board meeting potentially. Um, just to kind of plan out and talk about some of these things as they evolve. I know we, we usually do put one, a couple of those meetings on the books every year. Um, may, maybe this would be one of those things, we just want to, you know, make sure that everyone is understanding what the role is of input ownership. Um, you know, to Justine's point, so that no one feels that things are not being addressed. And there's no assumptions that things are being done, so I, 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 the feedback of, uh, a task force sounds really great as well. You know, to have that input from the community, so, but we don't, you know, we don't hear or we don't discuss that on a, on an ongoing basis at the school. Um, school committee meeting, so that's where it would be really, right now, uh, Brian working with, uh, Greg has really been driving those conversations.
All right, thank you. Um, any other comments from the public? I see a hand up, Luke.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can hear you now, could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, uh, Luke twenty eighty-four Rockland Ave, Meteor Mass. Yeah, I was, uh, I wanted to piggyback on what you were saying about trying to figure out what happened to make the bleachers closed suddenly now. Versus back four years ago. Uh, I believe. I brought a lot of the correspondence to the building commissioner. And to Greg and to the DPW director at the time. Specifically the codes that were in violation then. That were on the inspector's report now. And I was curious why they reopened back in October of two thousand eighteen. Um, following the incident that happened in September of two eight, of two thousand eighteen. Because I know that the gaps in the bleachers that I pointed out to the building commissioner back then. Uh, were partly the reason for, you know, the incidents that occurred. And they were never addressed, and then I was surprised that the bleachers were reopened in October. Uh, and I have plenty of correspondence with all these people addressing these issues. And for four years, uh, nothing happened. So I, I am curious what you find when you investigate or do whatever research you want to see as to why four years. We all knew that the bleachers were a problem and these issues existed. And yet, nothing happened and all of a sudden they're fully closed. And when you look at the inspector's report now, that they're very same issues that I brought up to him four years ago. So. It'd be curious to know what the answer would be.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Sweeney, I, I do want to note that my remarks were, were less to look backwards, uh, for. Uh, but more to learn from the past so that we don't repeat the mistake in the future. And so my, my comments were very much designed to be fore-looking and prevent, um, you know, further, uh, sudden closure of the bleachers. But, um.
Well, I think, I think you were saying, I think you were saying though, that so that we don't run into these problems in the future. Certainly, we need to learn from the past. Because, and, and maintenance of, uh, public, you know, buildings and whatnot. You can't just put off because it's not financially the right time to do things.
And I do believe we have done some things in the last four years, um. Mr. Town. Can you give the?
Uh, considering that there's been two graduation ceremonies that have occurred with. I don't know how many people on the bleachers, but certainly, I know the gaps that exist in the bleachers then exist now. So I, I don't know if we were just, uh, rolling the dice.
So, so the person who closed the bleachers in twenty eighteen, when, when the accident occurred. Was the same person who inspected them and opened them for reuse in twenty eighteen. And is also the same person that closed them in twenty twenty-two. So clearly, that, that's the person to discuss, the four of us don't have any insight into, into necessarily those. You know, without going and pulling the inspection report, but you know, so a person with, you know, knowledge of the, the repairs. That were made, did approve them after some repairs were made by the prior DPW director and his staff. And approved them for reopening. So it wasn't, it wasn't as you just suggested, a, um, taking a risk, taking a shot, you know, that was not the case. Our, our town building inspector rely on those things and, you know, that's his, those are his decisions to make. Made that decision, not in, in select board member or school committee member.
Before we.
I'm not pointing my finger to either of you, but I am, I am sort of somewhat concerned when. The very reasons that they were written down, that they were closed now. I had actually brought the specific code to the building inspector then. And I'm just, just giving you that little piece of information as to how, how are we inspecting things?
Greg, can you give us a brief update on what changes were made to the bleachers, uh, in twenty eighteen?
So, so I think it was already alluded to, only minor repairs, no building repair was required. And again, that was, um, determination made by both the public force at the time, in consultation with the building inspector. And the building inspector at the time did close because of this observation of the status of the bleachers since the time two thousand eighteen. And, and in particular, as a, as a response to, um, the incident that Mr. Sweeney is referring to. Um, but through the research that, that our building inspector did, and also in consultation with the regional building inspector. Um, the determination was made for, as Chris said. That, you know, and largely their grandfather thinks the age of the, of the structure itself, and, and they were suitable to be reopened at that time. Not to say that the building inspector didn't say that they were, um. Type of leaders that we should have, like, I don't think the building inspector would ever say that, like, those, those was the optimum choice is to, is to keep those current bleachers. No, but the determination was made that if, if there was going to be significant investments, it would be. Preferably into future and replacement bleachers, like, no one wants the current bleachers. Um, oh, so we, we tried to maintain the use of the bleachers. And to my knowledge, there has been another incident since, and I, and I apologize to sort of like undermine like how, how grave and serious the incident was back in two thousand eighteen. But, um. We were trying to make a deliberate effort, as you know, under the capital planning committee as well, to address the bleachers, but, but it wasn't. It wasn't, um, to say that we made the wrong call back in two thousand eighteen, or nor was it to, to make the call closing the bleachers down in twenty twenty.
My record is, there were a number of board replacements that were done, not only on seating, but also on floorboards. But it was not anything that was, uh, you know. That took long term or that cut down to look, to your point, that, you know, that reduced the size of those openings. That was not part of the repairs that were done at that time.
Right, was that structural?
It was just, it was just really a replacement of old and rotten boards. And, uh, for, for both foot area and seating area. And I remember when the boards went in, and I remember the first time it reopened, and I remember the comments from people saying, hey, you know, we got new boards.
All right, regardless, my point, I think we do need to take a look at what happened both in twenty eighteen and more recently. And use that as a future looking point to say, what can we do to prevent these sorts of things from happening immediately in the future?
Exactly.
Uh, other public comments, Natasha?
Yeah, I, I had a question, um, that is probably not going to be able to answer this evening, but just thinking about, because we're not going to have another budget subcommittee meeting. Before, um, I think before town, town meeting. But I know in the spring, there was money allocated, that free cash, there was a large amount put aside for the future demolition. Of the old buyer station, and I don't know if that money is, is imminent. And that needs to be used in this particular time, since it's still being occupied, or if there's consideration, because that was a substantial amount. That could be considered towards something else that might seem more time sensitive. It just was a conversation that, um, someone had asked, and I, and I didn't have an answer to, because we, we hadn't. It was after our last meeting, and I just wanted to, um. Punt that out there, that that was, I don't know if that'll be more of a FinCom conversation, or it's not even on a warrant really, but just thinking about, um, if that possibility. Could exist.
It, it's not on the warrant, but I think budget subcommittee meeting would be the place to open that discussion. Any other public comment? Okay.
You know, Mr. Chair, is this, is this discussion intended to cover item number twelve?
We, we will return to it at item twelve, we can talk about the specific procedural motions, I think that's more of the, um, how to navigate it through town meeting, et cetera. And I think there's two motions around that, so we'll, we'll return to the topic again, yes. No, that's fine, completely understand, I just want to make sure we had something upfront, given the amount of, um, concern over the issue. All right, we will move on to item five, which is our consent agenda. We have, uh, two items on here, the first of which is a, um, a drive for the Cub Scouts. a drive for the Cub Scouts and then the second is the cemetery deed. So.
We're doing it together, right?
Yes. Yeah, yep. So any questions on either item for the consent agenda? Consent agenda? Yes.
All right. I would just ask that they be careful, because I know that that's when they do the, that's when they do all the baseball also?
No, I don't. I don't mark. It's, it's busy Saturdays.
It is.
I, I will move to approve the consent agenda, items A and B as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures that approved.
Second.
Yes, and I believe on here, Mark and the Cub Scouts have coordinated with the other groups that are there. So, so I think that's been covered. All right. Any further comment? All right, then we will vote all in favor of Chris, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes to the consent agenda passes. We covered items six and seven, so we will move to item eight, the charter report. Coleman, welcome. So.
Grandpa.
Grandpa, and I just as I'm waiting here, I saw a picture of my granddaughter on an airplane because her, her parents went out to eat ball for a week to do it. So I'll pictures of her running around Harches National Park and stuff like that. And I hope this, hopefully that she stood on a long airplane ride home from that. But getting, getting to the topic at hand, I'm aware that everybody can check a copy of what we're calling a final draft version, our changes of both red line version and a sort of straight, this would be the new documented version. And also a copy of the interim report that I presented at the annual count meeting, which I would say is probably about ninety percent accurate since the, since that was presented. We had a couple of meetings during summer where we updated some other section of it. I didn't think you really wanted me to go through article by article of the charter and say, these are the changes that we're doing, but you have in there. You can read them, but I guess you more or less are saying, what is the steps forward from now? We had, we had sent those versions to county council. Who, she notified us on September nineteenth, she sent them to the AG office. Or just a friendly review to make sure that nothing that we are proposing and any of the changes or anything that may be still current in the charter is no longer legal. So we have that so that we don't go forward, vote on something and then later on find out that, oops, we made a mistake and have to revoke something. And it's just the fact that all this process takes a long time. We found out as we go forward is that this can only be done at an annual town meeting. So, okay, we won't have a vote until May. But then we also found out that, oh, it has to be submitted to town quarter with a final report six months prior to that town meeting. So our, our date that we're shooting for to have everything in by, which I'm pretty sure we should be able to, is November fifteenth. To have that into town quarter. So the, the job that I have right now is sort of updating that interim report to make a final report where we go into more detail, not just saying the main points of, oh yeah, we changed this in, in this article and this and that, or basically saying, yes, we changed this line in this article section, and this is the reason why. And going through sort of change by change as we go through. Although we can have some universal changes because in some cases, because just the way it sounded when you read it, a lot of times you have references to say something that by law and by law. And it just sounds a little funny when you actually say it out loud, but we changed it to by law and town by law. At least we separated that out a little bit. And also making sure we're doing the same reference to referring to town website. I can't remember all the stuff I had, whether we're saying it's two words or one word, but we, we went through it major. It was, it was consistent throughout. So there's certain things that we went through with that, that are sort of like universal changes to it. So I guess once we get all that in, then the ball goes into your court because then there's a certain timeframe of so many months that you have to have a couple of hearing about it. And it's also happened to have things printed up and being sent out to the voters ahead of the, I think the factory for the town election, because once we pass it at town meeting, it could be next May. You have to have a town election vote on it at the next town election, which would be the following May, so not May of twenty twenty-three, but May of twenty twenty-four. This, this is a long drawn out process and, you know, kind of been thinking that we started it in April of twenty twenty-one, so it takes about three years to go through this. Although we did go through the charter with a fine tooth coming and everybody sort of, on the committee, I'll say this is that we have a lot of strong personalities. And people who take a position and will discuss it and advocate for that position. And the best thing to do is listen to that side and let everybody have a chance to say and to work through it. It takes a while to do that. But at the same time, it didn't feel like we were under rush that we had to get it done right away. Wanted to make sure we got it right and basically kind of keep everybody sort of feeling that they had the input and their opinions were respected, which I think we've succeeded in doing that, even though in some cases, some things, some people might not think that we, they didn't forget the decisions that maybe they wanted, but I think, you know, we had to take some votes where there was a majority rule on it. But I think all in all, I think the changes are very positive for the charter for it. So I'll open up and if you have any specific questions about anything that we are proposing in the changes, I'll try to answer them for you.
I have a question.
Sure.
First of all, first of all, I appreciate your, your longstanding commitment to the charter of changing every year for years. It's phenomenal and I appreciate it. So thank you for that. But the second question, actually, the only question I have is, so you, you know, I know there's something that you just mentioned, like, you know, law, laws change, of course, has to change over, I think, but failing that, where, where do you get as a committee, like some of the suggestions for some of the changes? Other than with conversations with yourself, among yourself. Do you guys, are you guys accepting input from outside sources and suggestions or how is that?
I know. I haven't received, well, I haven't personally received any input from anybody else. I can't speak for the other committees and per se, maybe in conversations or, you know, or because most of our representatives serve on other committees. We only have three at-large members, myself, the anchor side and Brendan Charlie are the at-large members. So everyone else is there representing the committees that they're on for it. So possibly that a friend, neighbor or something said, hey, this would be a good idea to, to check on or whatever. The other thing as we're looking through and seeing how, whether we think something currently works remained or not, we look at other towns charters. The difficulty is that you know, we have town administrator with a select order. There are other cities or towns or cities, and sometimes they're, they're, they're called towns, but they're actually cities that might have a different structure for government. They might have an executive assistant. We, we used to have Mike, you know, this before he became town administrator, when we adopted the charter initially. We also have towns where we're town managers. So they are different responsibilities, different structure and trying to think, oh, we'll just take this in this charter and put it in there. It's can be comparing apples and oranges. And I could, you know, if I ask some questions to town council, all that, she has to, yeah, you, you just can't do that. You gotta be smart about what you pick from it and see if it fits with it. For whatever change here. So that's kind of thing where we, we somewhat hesitant in some cases, but in, in others, we kind of take it because we look like, yeah, this, this makes sense to do. And one, one thing I should point out, back in this past December, one member suggested that we should just take a timeout, sort of, sort of discuss. After we've been working at this for like seven, eight months, where do we feel we're better going? What goals do we have? Things that we're talking about is that you want to be transparent, open, easy to understand. But the other aspect of it is, is that we didn't want change just for change's sake. Wanted to make sure and took almost a kind of view of a, of a hypocritical, oh, first of all, do no harm. We didn't want to make change that then would mess things up. And the other aspect of it is like, well, did it need to be in charter? And one of the things was is that we were talking about financial openness and reporting. And the thing is that there were some people advocating, oh, we should put this in a charter. Well, we have one small line under the imperosso of the county administrator that sort of refers to that and then said like according to by law. And we already came out with the, the change that we did at the last annual committee with an update of that by law to do. And we have sort of an amendment to that come forward, you've probably seen, for just the fact that we wanted to have that in initial one, but we had worded wrong and we weren't sure what the right quick trigger mechanism was for it. So we decided, well, take it out and we can figure it out correctly and put it in, which we're doing now. Doing, working, nice, nice that I pumped both the chair of the charter and the bylaw committee. So it's worth it. It works like, yeah, we communicate pretty well.
Then any, any other questions?
No, thank you very much for the question.
Armand?
I actually had this similar question to what Chris was asking. And in particular, I was looking at article four, because you kind of clarified that, because you, you said that you guys were going to vote on that by law committee in regards to that article. Did that happen?
You mean, what I think, let me just turn to the page there.
It's about, it's about the transparency in reporting the financial.
Yeah, towards the goal. Okay, yeah. Well, that, that is proposed for the charter. But as I kind of said in the comments for last town meeting, that we're trying to get a step ahead of that in, in hope that this will be adopted and approved that, that will have the bylaw already in place. Because one of the requirements is that after the charter is approved, and part of that also is what we're changing in the charter is how the, I think when the charter was initially written, there wasn't a standing by law committee. So the town moderator had to form a committee to revise the bylaws for any changes of the charter required. Now that we do have a standing by law committee, we, we changed it so that the town moderator can add to that committee and also that there should be two members from the charter committee on that as well to sort of give input for that. Once that revision is done for the bylaws based on from what changes in charter occurred, those positions can, would be terminated. So that would be a different way of handling it. But if, if, if for some reason the bylaw committee goes by the wayside, it'll get twenty-four hundred years. Then we will also allow for forming of a new committee to do the changes of charter.
All right, all right, thank you.
All right, I'll just say on behalf, Bill, thank you very much for being that committee. Certainly one of the strong personalities that you're referencing earlier. There was a number of times where I think we were going in circles and you brought us back onto the, the path of progress. And we would still be lost in the woods talking about article of this subsection that without your leadership. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the thing where just like bigger, that everybody had their chance to talk. And once it's all talked out, we do it. And also I have to say, Natasha's still there. Yeah, she, she kind of helped us one time. We were all of a sudden, as we're talking about it, she made the motion to vote on it and you moved right along then after that. So it was something. And I appreciate the help from the people as well. And just to comment on Chris's thing, this is the third time I've been on a charter review committee and I have to be like, it's my last.
What is it, every ten years?
Then Mike, you know, this was doing halfway. The list sort of got overlooked for a while so that the charter was adopted in ninety-one. The next review was, well, we brought it forward in, I know it was two thousand three. And then the next one was two thousand thirteen, when, when it was initially started. And then us now, it started two thousand one. So it should, it should be on a, it should, committee should form on a year with ending in a one.
I will say, I think it was either Jack McKeen or Dick Downey who reached out to me right after we became chair in twenty-one and said, okay, just so you know, the charter review needs to come up. Okay.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity. If you have any questions, you know, just, just email me and I can give you a quick response.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
We're going to move on. Number nine, I believe we were going to delay this one until we had more time to prepare some slides. But so did you want to, since we have it on the agenda, did you want to give a brief, quick, quick, high level without the full overview?
Oh, Chair, we learned about the sustainability committee and so two quick notes is that the sustainability committee has been meeting regularly and we are advancing, putting together a climate action plan and to that end, we have a survey that's out now. We posted it on the Facebook page. It's been posted around town. We have, we have a QR code in, in the back there on the piece paper. So, so we're, we're encouraging anybody, student, a resident, a business person, or anybody who does business in Maynard to, to answer those questions just to see if we can get some good information for that. The plan will reflect that. So that's item number one. And then item number two, which is the next item on your agenda, is that one of the actions that we were talking about was to do community aggregation and the community and to our lovely surprise, we realized that that had already been voted on in previous years at town meeting, but never followed through. So we were able to just jump on to follow through because town council said it was, it was still a valid vote. So we have jumped on and we have interviewed a couple of companies who do this community aggregation. And we have one of them here tonight who's going to talk to us about what that is and how it works and how does it benefit the community and what's its advantage?
And, and many other topics, but we'll hear about those.
And yes, and of course, we'll, we'll, we have a timeline. We, we just get it.
Understand. All right, we can take questions. As I mentioned, we will have the sustainability committee back for, for a more formal presentation along the lines of what we've seen from other boards and committees last year. So does anybody have any quick questions?
How much feedback you getting to the, to the online?
We've actually been getting some really good feedback. I think I can't remember the last. We, we, we posted it and within, you know, days we had, we had a pretty good response. So we're, we're encouraged.
I did. It doesn't take long.
No, it doesn't take long. I think it will give us good feedback.
And then you've already sort of set up our item ten. So do you want to just give us an overview of how we came to invite Mr. Grummer here?
So the community aggregation program, there's a couple of companies that, that do this for communities and have been very successful in different communities. And we interviewed a couple of them and we have come up, Peregrine Energy Group is, is a group that we, we selected as somebody who we think can help Maynard. And we've invited them here tonight to, to give us presentation and just give, give a quick overview again of what community aggregation is. How that works.
Mr. Grummer.
Our Grummer is on, I see. So when I meet yourself and.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
And I believe you have a slide presentation, correct?
I do. What's the best way to operate that? Should I share my screen or do you have it on screen there?
We are preparing to bring it up.
Excellent.
Or, or do you want? What's your preference?
Whichever's easier for you. It doesn't.
Why don't, why don't you present in that way? You can drive the slides.
Excellent. I will do that. So I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen now. All right. Can you guys see this, the slides there?
As we can.
Excellent. So we're here to talk tonight about, as was explained about community choice, about community choice aggregation. What we'd like to cover and we'll, we'll do it quickly. I know you have a very full agenda, but quickly introduce ourselves, then quickly describe what community choice aggregation is. And then describe a typical program timeline and the key decisions the town will face in putting your program together. And then the next steps for you. By way of introduction, we have a few members of our team here tonight. We'll just introduce ourselves quickly if I can. My colleagues are willing to do that. So I'm Paul Grummer. As you know, my role in the aggregation programs is I help with the program planning and also with the regulatory. my role in the aggregation programs is I help with the program planning and also with the regulatory review. Um, and I'm with, joined by two folks. Um, one is Marlena Patton. Marlena, do you want to introduce yourself quickly?
Hi, yeah, sure. I'm Marlena Patton and I help with, uh, education outreach and customer support and operational program management.
And Kim?
Hi, I'm Kim Pear. I, um, handle the electricity procurement for our aggregations.
Excellent. Thank you both. And so we all work together. Uh, to simplicity, I'll, I'll walk through the slides and then Kim and Marlena can, uh, join, jump in if we have questions as we go. Um, so to introduce our company, um, we're a consulting firm. We work in the area mostly of renewable energy and energy efficiency. And then we, for the last several years, we've been helping communities, um, to develop community aggregation programs. Um, we work with thirty three communities across the state, um, including some large ones like Cambridge and Worcester and Newton. Um, also smaller ones in a number of communities, uh, nearby to Maynard. We work with Acton, for example, Weston, Weyland, Lexington, um, and a handful of others. So Lincoln is another one, um, fairly nearby. Um, so let me now just briefly describe what community aggregation is. So it's really a form of group electricity purchasing where the town uses the buying power of the community to secure a, a good electricity price and a good electricity offering for the residents. And it's an alternative, uh, both to the basic service that you get from the utility. If you haven't chose something else, chosen something else. And also an alternate, alternative to the offers that folks get, um, in the mail and over the phone from private electricity companies. Um, community aggregation is very popular in Massachusetts. About a hundred and fifty communities have active programs. Um, as I said, including, you know, one of the large, the larger cities in the Commonwealth, Boston, Worcester, Cambridge and others, as well as, um, quite a number of small towns. So what are the benefits of aggregation? Um, the key ones are first price stability. You can offer a more stable, constant price for the residents. Um, the potential for savings as compared to the alternatives. Um, although you can't guarantee savings, most communities have achieved savings for the residents. Also consumer protection by offering a consumer friendly offering. Um, and then the opportunity to include additional renewable energy in the town's electricity supply. And I'm going to highlight just two of these benefits on the next slides. Um, the first one is price stability. And let me explain the slide you're looking at. Um, the blue line there shows ever source basic service prices. This is the price you get for the ever sources electricity supply. If you don't choose something else. And you see from the slide, um, the price for that service changes every six months, tends to be higher in the winter months, lower in the summer months. The red line shows a typical aggregation program. And what you see there is it's a stable price, the same price all year long. And the goal of the aggregation is often to, is to beat the average of the ever source price over the course of the year. So you'd be lower, sometimes higher, other times, but lower on average over the course of the year. Um, and then it's important for me to highlight, I'm both required to make this disclaimer and it's also important to make it. Um, savings can't be guaranteed, um, because ever source changes their price every six months and the future prices aren't known. So you can't guarantee savings, but that's a goal for the community to provide savings and they're good opportunities for savings. Another benefit which I explained is to have additional renewable energy in the town's electricity supply, which is why in many communities, it's a sustainability committee. That's, um, the motivating force behind the program. The key point from this slide is that, um, different communities who've chosen to add additional renewable energy, have chosen very different levels of renewable energy. So all the way from Newton, which is the highest at sixty two percent extra renewable energy, all the way down on the right to the towns on Cape Cod, who have just one percent additional renewable energy. So the key takeaway here is that if Maynard decides to go forward and to do this, you can choose how much, what's the right amount of renewable energy for Maynard. Renewable energy comes with a cost. So you get to, so you get to make your own balance between additional renewables and cost. The next slide here shows a typical program timeline, and I won't drill into the details of it. The two big takeaways though are that it's kind of a long slog. So it's more than a year to get from where you are today to have a program that's up and running. And secondly, the biggest piece of that timeline is the review by a state agency, the State Department of Public Utilities. In order to have an aggregation program, you need to have that program approved by this state agency. And even though they've approved a hundred and fifty others, it still can take a long time for them to issue that approval. In six months, if you're lucky, um, and more commonly even longer than that. So that's the timeframe that you would be looking at. And that's what the biggest piece of that timeframe is. The first thing to look at in the timeline is that by statute, you're required to, to give the public or the residents of Maynard, the citizens of Maynard, an opportunity to review your program before you finalize it and before you even file it for state review. So that would be one of your first, um, it's really the first milestone to work towards is to develop the aggregation documents. And then let the residents have a look at them and offer any comments that they, that they have. Um, in putting your, the program together, the town will have a few key decisions to make. Um, from small ones to big ones, um, they include things like, what do you want to call this program? Do you have a logo for it? Um, what options do you want to offer the residents? Whether you want to collect some funding for the town as part of the program. Um, how to customize the outreach efforts so that they're, so that they're effective in Maynard. You want an outreach program that's, that's customized for, for your community. And then finally, they'll review the contract that you'll, the town will ultimately enter with an electricity supplier. I'll highlight just two of these decisions on the next two slides. Um, the first is the program options and program and the names of those options. This is probably the most important decision for the town. Um, we've illustrated at the bottom, what's a very common structure for communities. Where you have three choices for the residents. A standard offering, um, which is what people get unless they choose one of the others. And that standard offering has some amount of additional renewable energy in it. More than zero, less than a hundred, somewhere in the middle, and that's a decision for the town to make. And then two other options that residents could choose if they want. Folks who want a hundred percent renewable energy could choose that, and that would come at an extra, a higher price. Or an option where the someone would want no extra renewable energy and that comes with a lower price. This is a common structure, but it will be up to Maynard to decide what you want your structure to be. This is just an illustration of what many other communities have done. The second big issue I think for the town is whether or not to collect a little money for the town through the program. Some communities do this, other communities don't. Um, this depends on, you know, obviously the community's interest. Um, it would be a small fee that's added to the electricity price. Um, it's a tiny fee, just a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour. So it, for Maynard and Maynard's case would raise about twenty five thousand dollars a year. And you could use that for program related expenses, including, for example, to contribute to the cost of a town staff person who worked on the program. Or possibly to support renewable energy projects in the town. That's another decision you would make as part of putting your program together, whether or not to include that fee. Um, and then finally, just the next steps, um, if you were to try to go forward, if you, you know, to work with us or one of the other consulting firms, we would put together a contract between our, um, our firm and the town, um, conveniently, uh, for the town, it's a no cost contract for you. It's a, we get paid on a broker basis. So we would get a small fee on the electricity sales if the town goes forward. But if the town ultimately doesn't go forward with the program, there's no cost for the town and, and, and never any cost that comes out of the town budget. It's a broker fee out of the contract and, and all firms in this business work that way. Um, so that would be the first step. Then we would work with you to prepare the aggregation plan and associated documents. Then you would have that public review period within the town that I mentioned earlier. Then finally, next we would file those documents with the Department of Public Utilities and then go through their, their review process, which we would manage for you. Um, so that was a very quick overview of aggregation, uh, and I wanted to get through it quickly because I know you have a full agenda, but we're happy to answer any questions or go into more detail on any of these points if you would like.
Any questions? None?
You know, what, uh, I always have questions. I'm just trying to think how to, how to phrase it in a way that quite asking the question and to ask. Um, a couple of things. First thing that's going to come to people's mind when they hear a program like this is what's in it for me? The individual, not the town, the individual. And what is the likelihood? And I know you can't make any guarantees, but based on the statistics that are out there, the likelihood that somebody saves money at the end of the day with the town entering into this program, because I assume, um, it would be an opt out program that would happen where it would come into the town. It would be part of our, this is the way our energy is delivered. Unless you tell the town you don't want to belong. So what's in it for the individual?
Yes. So, um, first I just, well, that, yes, that's an excellent question. And, um, you're exactly right that it is an opt out program. So all customers who are currently on, um, ever source basic service, which is usually about eighty five percent of the electricity accounts in the town would become part of the program automatically unless they said they did not want to participate. Um, what's in it for customers? Um, for everyone, there's the opportunity for savings. And as I mentioned, you can't guarantee savings, but I, I would say that in the vast majority, just, you know, so we can't promise the future, but if we talk about the past, all of the active aggregation programs that we work with have achieved savings for the program participants. And that's true of the other consulting firms too. By and large, these programs do save money. Now, it's not thousands and thousands of dollars. No one's going to buy a car with the amount they save in this program. But they're going to pay a little less probably, most likely they're going to pay a little bit less than they would on basic service. The other quick benefits are it is a stable price. So you don't have the seasonal price swings that you get otherwise with basic service. Um, and then if you're interested in this, and some people aren't, some people aren't. But if you're interested in it, you get additional renewable energy. So you get a cleaner electricity supply. That's, that's better for the climate.
And my follow up would be for somebody who is already energy, uh, conscious and has solar on their house, does this affect their ability to save through a solar program?
Um, that's another great question and one we get, uh, all the time. And the answer is it would not affect that. So if you have solar on your house, it, it works exactly the same way that it does. Otherwise, you still have your solar panels. To the extent they're producing electricity, they're still what's supplying your house. To the extent you're overproducing, putting electricity back in the grid, you still get a credit from ever source calculated the exact same way that ever source calculates that credit now.
Thank you, Paul.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have one question about, um, you mentioned during the presentation about the fact that we could, um, collect a small fee that, you know, could provide salary support for, um, either town energy or sustainability manager who works on the aggregation, aggregation program. Barring the fact that we currently don't have someone who would work on the aggregation program, is staff time necessary? And do you know how much time that would be?
Yeah. So that's, I mean, that's another great question. I, I would say there, um, the staff commitment is, is really quite, is really quite modest. So these are, um, you're sort of turnkey programs where the consulting firm you hire, uh, will manage the program for you. We direct customer questions to, uh, you know, there's a number of folks, someone has a question, there's a number that they can call and goes to us. We manage the website otherwise. The main, uh, town functions are, one is, is oversight and direction. So we work for you and you will make the big policy decisions. Um, and then second, once your program is up and going, there will be residents who will call the town with questions about it. We'll put our number out front in all the materials that go to residents. But it is a town program and some folks are going to feel more comfortable talking to the town about it. And so we'll, we'll provide back sheets, et cetera, for sound staff to you so that, but there will be, um, there will be some questions for town, for town staff. The towns that use this fee, and maybe this gets more directly to your question. The towns that use this fee to support a sustainability manager, that person works on the program, but they're really using it to provide a more expanded effort than a town would if they weren't collecting that fee and weren't using it to fund a sustainability manager. So the person needs to work on the program, but it becomes an expanded view of that. And it's a way for the town to do a little bit more in the sustainability area.
One other question, Paul, if I may, where does the bill come from? Um, does it come from ever source or does it come from a separate, uh, company?
Yes. So the custo- the residence electric bill will continue to come from ever source, just like now. And they'll just pay ever source for the total amount. And then ever source divides up the money on the back end. Um, the key background fact behind this is, um, electricity service has two parts. There's delivery, what's called delivery, and there's what's called supply. Ever source does the delivery no matter what, and that includes the why maintaining wires, reading your meter and sending you your bill. The supply part, you have some choices around. You could get that from ever source. You can get that from the town program. But it all gets funneled included in the same bill. So from a resident's perspective, this is really pretty seamless. You still get one bill from ever source. You still pay ever source just like before.
But in any way reflect to the bill receiver, customer, what their bill would have been had they not been in the, you know, do you see your savings in front of you so that you're not guessing? What am I doing? Am I, am I making the right decision?
Um, so not in your bill when it comes month to month. Um, what the residents will see though is every customer prior to enrollment, enrollment in the program um, gets a letter. Um, the supplier will send it, but it's a letter from the town and the town dictates the content of that letter. And that letter explains the program and it states both the program price and the ever source basic service price. So residents can compare, okay, do I want this price or that price? And then make their decision about what to do. So you do see the price difference in a letter that goes to you directly. Which is good, but on your bill, ever source doesn't give you that, you know, the savings figure every month or doesn't do that comparison for you.
What would somebody decide as they're going along if they want to stay with the program? What would be their, what would be their ability to understand what, what the difference might be?
Well, we will, um, you know, the, the, the main vehicle is this letter, which does go to every resident. And then in addition to that, um, prior to the program launch, there will be customer education sessions in the town, um, which we will help with. We'll do the presentations with you for you, however you'd like. We also maintain for the town, a town specific, um, program website that explains the, the program, customers' options, the price of the program, the price of basic service, um, how the whole thing works, information like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So I believe our next step is getting a contract in place. Which I don't think we have the motion formally tonight, but I think the Sustainability Committee has done a good job bringing it this far and, and can help bring the next steps up to fruition.
We have not.
Okay. So I think that's.
Well, yeah, that's, would there, wouldn't there need to be a discussion from the board to authorize the Sustainability Committee to continue?
So we could do that now? We wanted to?
You can. That's what I'm saying. If you give me directions to negotiate this contract, we'll.
Does everyone feel comfortable if they have enough information to move ahead? Cause this was just on the agenda as we see presentation from nothing about a vote.
I think I'd like to think about it for a week. Need to say it. Sorry.
This is, this is requiring, uh, you type of, one of my companies have to be involved. No, I don't think, I believe, I believe energy and they probably know, but I've been maybe just off the top of your head, I believe it's exempt from public procurement law.
Aggregation. Yes. Mr. Grummer, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Aggregation contracts are, are specifically exempted from state procurement law.
So why don't, why don't we move forward and see if we get the contract, but we'll have it back and we won't, we won't give, um, authority. We'll keep that for ourselves to finalize the contract. Then it'll come back up for a vote.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I guess, I, yeah. I don't know a lot about it. So the fact that I just want to make sure that it concerns me that it's an opt out. So everyone's going to be thrown into it without really understanding.
Uh, otherwise it becomes very difficult to get the aggregation, because if you don't have, if it's an opt in, it's exactly the same reaction. I don't know enough about it. I'm not going to jump in, but if you have an. I don't know enough about it, I'm not going to jump in, but if you have an opt out, then that's.
That's A C the benefits.
That's one of the benefits of it.
By tricking people?
That's what the letter and the public education section for, there's a lot, there's a lot of communication.
To be fair, when this first came to town, it's one of the chief proponents for aggregation system back several years ago. And so we had this discussion many years ago, but I still think it's important to ask those questions, get the answers. Make sure everybody fully understands before we move forward.
Okay.
So put it on the next agenda, is there a reason?
What, once, let's, I, I, I feel we're.
Which is next week, so that one's a.
So, yeah, we can, so there's, what's that? That's fine by me, I think we can move forward. So, yeah, we can put on the next agenda to grant the town administrator authority, the sustainability committee authority to.
Why, I already have that authority, I I am your, I am your agent. But I I'm asking, are you asking me to do that, which it sounds like you are to ask me to, to engage in negotiations?
Well, I don't think that the board expressed their willingness to move forward.
That's what I want to be clear on.
Right, so what, yeah, we just need a checkpoint where it comes back to the board at some point, I think, that's what we're asking for, correct?
Armin hasn't weighed in.
No, I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually along the line, Justine, I mean, this is the first time it's presented to us. And I understand this is something that's important to to the town and to the, to everybody else, to the citizens, but I think we should take a. Take a look at it and bring it up to a vote maybe at the next meeting.
It is, it's better words, out, out, for me, I guess. Important to know what I'm talking about.
Okay, the information is there, yes.
So one comment is that there's a bunch of towns that do this, and so they all have a webpage that explains it. So that's a useful place to start to say, oh, and I'm happy to give you a list that send it to Greg. These towns have really good webpages and kind of shows, show the progress of the year. So that, that's a good place to start, but yeah.
Very good. Okay, any other questions? Alright, Mr. Grammar, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Alright. And so thank you. And I'll, I'll thank Sally Warner from the Sustainability Committee too, who was involved in in working with. Alright, we're moving on to item eleven, contracts, and we have three, and we will start with the Marble Farm. Contract, so. Greg, can you give us an overview on what the changes here from the previous proposals that we've seen come through, well, not only here but town meeting?
I'll do real brief, but I I don't want to steal anything. David Marks.
Certainly.
So, yeah, so town meeting had already appropriated, I'm just joking, town meeting had already appropriated. A hundred thousand dollars towards this project, which is, and I, I know like oversimplifying, but it's improvements or certain preservation efforts. Towards Marble Farm, which is across Chris's boat yourself on. Or Brown Street. Brown Street. Okay, so, but it's up, it's up in the corner, so. But over the course of the last year, in particular, construction costs have been significantly increased. And it's been difficult to to really pin down the the final contract costs. There's already been some costs associated just to the preparation of those documents, costs. But the contract has now been out of there at the bid, and we did receive that, and that the CPC has already considered. Additional article, which is in the special time meeting order for its consideration of approval. But this contract for the board's consideration tonight is for eighty six thousand, six hundred seventy two dollars to Belko Landscaping. However, I am asking the board to consider operas, the town minister to approve the contract. As well as any subsequent changes, because if the, if special community does appropriate further money, that there's some add-ons to its changers. That, that, the, that this work. This is, you know, a preference by the, but to be done, if we have the money to do so. And that would be kind of like on an ongoing basis to do that work again, using C P C. That's like, I'm, I'm hitting some wave tops, and I hope it wasn't inaccurate, I'm saying, so I'd like to, like to kind of defer, I think, to David Marks. So, David?
Good evening.
What did I miss, David?
So what's the question?
Okay.
First, David, can you introduce yourself real quick?
Yes, David Mark, ten Maple Streets, Mayfair, Massachusetts.
What, what's, what, what can you say about, about what you, you know, where we are in this project? This, this contract is for, is to be with Belko. And then what, you know, what do you think is like the, where you are in the project, where the project is going to go, your aspirations?
Okay, let me summarize. This was approved. In the spring of twenty twenty one with that budget of a hundred one thousand. And a number of parts of it, as outlined by the landscape architect who had put in in the bid. That included certain, let's call them, safety issues, a fence around the foundation. Filling in the pump house and taking away the structure of the building, removing the brick of causeway. Moving all the dead trees, removing the two very large brush piles as fire hazards. And then there were some additional considerations at the time. A stone path all the way around the foundation, a stabilized stone dust path. A stabilized some dust path leading from the parking lot to the rail trail. Two benches, a bike rack, the replacement of the causeway with the wooden bridge, and a second informational sign. We had bids come in, in the spring of twenty twenty two, and all of the bids. Even at the minimum, the base at that time were far in excess of a hundred one thousand that had been approved. So we're working with Justin DiMarco, DJ Chapin from the Landscape Architect, and myself, we decided to. Propose a, let's call it a bare bones project that would address safety. And again, as I said, that would be a fence around the foundation, pump house, brick causeway, dead trees and brush piles. With that, the base only Belko came in under the hundred one thousand at that time. And as far as I know from Justin, therefore a contract was offered and signed. And I'm not sure when, but Belko is preparing to start the construction on the site. Okay.
Not, not quite yet. I'm being told.
Okay. Yes, CPC. Asked Justin to consider whether an additional thirty or forty thousand could in add further to the project. By creating the stone dust path around the foundation. I want to consider this, in my opinion, this is a nice but not necessary part of construction. As it stands now, the entire foundation can be observed from two sides. And the east side and the south side, and there's no need to have a path going around the west side and the north side. Also, I think right now we have it without benches, without the second sign. So that's where we stand now, we have an approved project, contract, content, contract let. I'm not sure when Belko will start, but. My hope is that they actually start and finish this fall. I am concerned that if we try to start adding an addendum to this. Even though they had bid on those parts, stone dust path, one, so this path two. Both parts required a completely circle the foundation. It would delay the actual construction of this. So I think I've summarized where we stand right now. And I'd be happy to answer any questions people have.
Think I'm a bit confused. We got the original hundred thousand, I understand the bids came in slightly higher or were they astronomically higher than the hundred thousand? That was allocated.
They were with some addendums, in that case, the addendums were. I think the benches, the bike racks, they came in at a hundred and fifty to a hundred and ninety thousand.
But now is there a current special town meeting article? To approve forty thousand dollars more. But from what I heard, what you said, you didn't think that all of that was necessary?
That's my opinion, and I do not know if there's a proposal to put this on the special town meeting this fall. Again, my concern is that. At the latest construction, because they have to figure, they have to wait until the second part is funded before they can start. And I'd sort of said that this may push it off to actually construction in the spring of twenty twenty three rather than this fall.
My other follow up, go ahead, I think.
Can we invite DPW director to clarify that point?
Yeah.
So. Justin DiMarco, DPW here. Yeah, I like to help clarify this, because it is kind of a complex situation. So the original appropriation, we're awarding Belko based off of their current bid at eighty nine thousand. So the original appropriation, a hundred and one, there is costs that have already been expended out of the budget to do the design. In the bid docs. So technically, Belko is within our, our current allocation of budget and allowed to be awarded. We issued award based on base bid to meet the curmer law. We can't issue award on ad alt in this, because we actually don't have allocated funds for that. But we can issue award based off base bid. That is the contract that Greg Johnson is presenting at this time to award contract. So in regards to the subsequent CPC control slash article that's in front of you. Is CPC was concerned with the entirety of the project not getting done as presented as part of the original application. So I made a recommendation to CPC that they consider, my original recommendation was they consider an additional fifty thousand dollars. One to deal to potentially be able to re-scope back to the original application. To handle the volatility and inflation in the market right now, and to handle any unforeseen issues that come with construction. So even though the contract is awarded for eighty nine thousand, if they are excavating and hit ledge, there's triggers that. That create change orders and the opposite effect, any excess money. Without fluctuation and availability contingencies, what we call within the financial structure of a project. We would potentially be capped at that budget, and then if we ran into unforeseen issues, we'd have to re-scope the project down, actually thus. Reducing what the impact of the total project is. So my recommendation at that time was to increase the funding. To allow us to move forward with one, the base project. And potentially adding financial stability for the inflationary factor that will take place if there's a material change during the construction project. And it also allows us the opportunity to do what's called a change order within the contract, to allow for. The applicant David Mark, the design team, to kind of explore adding some of the things that we had to leave off as part of the procurement process. So. The short and sweet is if that excess money is appropriated, that allows for flexibility for both applicant and the design team to expand on the original design. And allow us to make sure the project goes through complete as presented. If the control and article is not implemented at town meeting, we're going to have the base bid, which is in front of you now in the award process. And if we run into any unforeseen issue in this change orders, instead of actually appropriating more funds, we'll have to reduce the work.
Okay, uh, hear me out on this. Sat in on virtually, in com meeting, it was on this topic. And one of the issues that came up during that discussion was that. This wasn't going to create an official park. And therefore there would be no maintenance provided by the DPW, and it would basically be, you know, left to. Volunteers and whoever to keep it clean. So if part of this money is going towards benches and everything else. And we're going to rely on volunteers that we don't know if ten years from now, the same volunteers are going to come forward. Are we setting ourselves up to have a weed farm with benches that nobody's maintaining? So why spend the money to create a park that's not going to be a park? But rather just create. The minimal that David appears to think is necessary, that will allow us to have what he envisioned at the outset. Does that make sense?
So Dave, I don't disagree. If you remember when this application. Prior to the previous allocation was presented to the board, the DPW did not support the project in terms of operational support. We did support it in terms of the idea, the historic premise, I think it's a great addition to the community. So I made that very clear then, and it still holds true now, specifically with their operating budgets in the past two fiscal years. So when you're talking about the conversation of should you support one or the other, that's not, that's not necessarily up to the DPW. My recommendation was if the CPC wanted to see the additions to the original plan put in place. Technically, it's their decision to approve that, push it up to select board, and we support that process through program management. But we didn't guide the CPC that it needs to be done or doesn't, they guide us. And my recommendation was based off of the fluctuation, if their concerns were making sure that the project took place and met all the original goals. That we will need more finance. We will need more funding, because the anticipation of working on that slim budget. If there's any issues, then we're going to continue to re-scope down.
If I could add that, it was made clear at the time the proposal was submitted to CPC. That DPW clearly stated it would not be able to maintain the site, which is primarily mowing the lawn. And planting flowers and raking leaves in the fall. Now, right now, those, that work is done by volunteers from two organizations, the Trail of Flowers and the Esmit River Rail Trail. And we hope to make those. Two organizations stronger so that they can have a ongoing commitment to continue to do these two things. Mow the lawn, rake the leaves, and plant more flowers.
Alright. And so we have the forty thousand dollar appropriation that's already on the special town meeting warrant. That's set, and then this motion would allow Greg, the authority to add essentially another fifty thousand dollars. Forty six thousand, seven hundred and eighty three to negotiate above that, is that what I'm reading here?
No, this is the eighty six thousand, six hundred seventy three from the original one hundred thousand.
But, but I.
David is somewhat correct.
Yes, yes.
David is correct.
Because I feel like, I feel like, yes.
Whatever the balance is of the current allocation, which I do not have off, off the top of my head, but it's under one hundred one thousand. So whatever the delta is between the original budget of one hundred and one thousand and the current contract at eighty six and what hasn't already been expended. I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. Plus the forty thousand is the potential change.
That's right, so you, I think that, that's what you missed.
Alright, yeah, so. But what you're, what we're approving tonight, the contract tonight, is covered by the allocation, the initial allocation.
The basement is example, but, but I had changed, and I apologize, because I made this change after you read it, but so you refer to your. That, that I, I changed it, I amended the, the motion, I recommended motion, it's to authorize me to do eighty six thousand. And subsequent change orders up to the total vote.
And just for more clarification. Change orders with that delta isn't necessarily dedicated to Belko. There could be design changes within the design contract, things of that nature. So technically, don't think that the forty six thousand is completely towards Belko. If there is change in design because of change orders in construction, that will also happen.
Yes, your comment, there's this bid, the additional amount being considered is large enough that it has to be put out to bid. And not just assume that it goes to Belko.
So we can do a change order up to twenty five percent of the contract. And then the addition of the excess funding is for the soft costs, as you heard me explain, that the design rechanges and bid docs if there is.
So. What is the potential total appropriation rate?
Alright, any other questions? And. David, there's an invitation for a groundbreaking event here, do you just want to give us a very quick summary of that?
Yes, I put in a proposal, I hope that's something that's considered and approved by the select board today. And what I intend to do is schedule that before the construction starts, so probably sometime in, in late October. And a very, no, no, no tent, no microphone, no food, but just, you know, show.
I don't think we need a motion for that, so I think, yeah, absolutely.
I'll say all costs earned by Trail of Flowers, if there are any.
But there's no date here, and it's already public, like it's a park, it's a park, right, so. I think, I think if they were, if, if they were just looking to use maybe a significant amount of time resources, I would probably see. But I doubt it. I think in this case, the sense of the board I'm getting is that we're in support of this project, and likelihood if, if you approve this contract as well, then I'm going to expect. It'll probably be in support of a ground break.
Yeah, and I, I'm supportive of the project, I don't know if I'm supportive of this motion. And because I see that, I see sort of a separation here, I think that's the project. Which David from, and maybe, and I want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding what David was saying. David was saying, we don't really need this additional.
And he's, yeah, okay, so that's between him and CPC.
Yeah, but that's, it's in CPC.
I understand that, but CPC has other projects somewhere, maybe not now, but down the road that they could use this money in. That perhaps won't be impacted. in a way I'm concerned about the lack of maintenance in the future, not David's going to take care of it as long with his group for the next five years for sure. I see him out there on a regular basis already. Uh, I don't have any questions about that. I have a question about the long-term viability and whether or not this is in the best interest of the community in the long term to put extra money in for extras that may just be overgrown.
You're not.
And then people saying, look what we don't do and and we set ourselves up for it.
But isn't that already decided by the CPC and now up to town meeting voters, or will be?
Well, we're going to town meeting is not what we're doing here. The the issue of what's going to town meeting has already gone to town. This is beyond what we're
You know.
No, this, this is, I, I think everyone is on a very similar page, but I just want to give my clarification. And I hope this helps, but it's not correct. So David is correct. This is to both meet the terms of this contract versus less than what the original appropriation was, which is eight hundred thousand dollars. It's already been, it's CPC has already committed that in town voters have already appropriated. And we are looking to be able to use the likely forty thousand dollars additional money that 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 we don't want to have to continue to go back to the board to do. If there's, if there's, what we're looking for is a certain understanding and agreement from the board that if we were going to do this whole project according to the CPC allocation, according to what the CPC has put forward. And admittedly, as the this this board has not yet approved on warrant. But if it does, in that in that path, go to town meeting is appropriated, then there's a hundred forty thousand dollars to use. And and if the CPC would like that money spent and we spend that money. And that that's what we're looking for to authorize.
But and this doesn't give you any further authority beyond that money?
No, as I wrote the motion, up to the total appropriation. Are we can clarify, like, I mean, like, for the board, can you change?
So all we're all we're going on this desire is to approve the contract. The money's already been appropriated, but we're up to a hundred.
Up to a hundred.
And then you're seeking, and we're seeking another forty thousand at special at special time meeting. You have a hundred forty thousand vote. All this piece of paper in front of us is guessing that we are going to sign the contract with Belco
Yes.
in the amount of eighty six thousand, which has already been appropriated to a hundred thousand.
Yeah, but you're then authorized.
We're actually saving fourteen.
Well, no. That that that's part of the whole, that's part of the whole trick, I guess, or the issue.
Yeah, and I don't want to mislead you. I'm glad we're
But but this
I'm not thinking that you're
So Belco has said, we we see this as today, eighty six thousand dollars.
That's what they've been.
That's what the bid is. To to Justin's point and David's point, is a potential, both Davids, there's a potential that the eighty six will rise up to the hundred and possibly more. But right now, what we're talking about is the eighty six because the hundred and forty are totally separate.
But I am asking for your authorization.
That's that's where that's where my concern comes. Asking for the authorization goes beyond what town meeting and we and CPC has authorized.
No, the combined of the two town meeting CPC authorization is the total he is asking for. So the one hundred and then the forty, if it passes, both of which would be going through CPC and town meeting.
You can't even spend more than is appropriate.
That's true, right?
That's why we couldn't do it at all.
We can't, we can't give them the authority to spend more than was appropriate.
Right, so you can change the motion to uh up to a hundred forty thousand dollars. That's uh, but they got something with the contract.
Because I would find with leaving the authority to make the decision to town meeting to have them vote as, and if that's what this is doing.
The the town meetings later in
I realize that, but
This is, this is saying we're hundred thousand has already been allocated, right? We're granting him the eighty six and up to the total amount, which is currently a hundred. And if it happens to get bumped up another forty, then he doesn't have to go back and ask permission again. He's able to do the contracts for that forty for the marble farm. So it's basically saving another discussion, potentially, if the forty thousand gets passed at town meeting where we just have to re-grant.
Well, you know, it sounds like you guys have the votes to pass, and I'm going to vote no, just because I'm confused by where we're going, but the votes are there, so we're good. I I'm just concerned about my understanding of it, and I don't want to drag it out any longer. But if the votes are there and nobody else is going along, that's fine. I just want to uh express my concern, and it probably is misguided, but I think I'm doing the right thing.
I feel like we're administering a contract, so it's you know, so it is the will, if you will, of the town meeting voters that we move forward with at least a hundred thousand dollars. If the forty thousand dollars is approved. Right, and then if the forty thousand dollars is approved at town meeting on the twenty fourth, then again, that is the will of the voters to continue that. So if it's not appropriated, clearly, it would not be, it wouldn't. So I think that moving forward.
So I maybe maybe it's the order that this was on the agenda where
Well, the truth is, the forty thousand doesn't bother in this discussion. Because the forty thousand dollars, there's not, there's not a lot on this agenda. It's a totally separate other agenda item that's going to be discussed. When we get down to special town meeting, it's not part of this discussion. Because your appropriation today is only a hundred thousand. It's equal forty thousand unless town, a town special time meeting voters approve it on the twenty fourth.
And but the way this is the way this is worded, if that forty thousand gets passed, he doesn't need to come back to us. He can spend up to the total appropriation of one forty. So we're we're basically saying, yes, go ahead, spend the one hundred thousand, the town meeting has already passed, and if town meeting passes another forty, you can also spend that again. All for the marble farm. But if it doesn't, he's still going to need a hundred back.
And I I follow that.
Okay.
And I guess where I'm where my probably should have come after the town meeting.
So that I was going to ask, because I don't recall, can you speak to the timing or maybe David, but can you speak to the time? Why not do this after uh October twenty fourth? So the reason that the motion is in front of you is because the approval of the contract and allowing Greg to do the change orders means that we don't have to go to the select board every time there's a change.
No, we wouldn't want to do that anyway. Can't can't the authority to make those changes come after the money is allocated?
You can, but then the delay in the project actually takes place. So we're waiting for town meeting to appropriate that funds where we can actually start.
To begin this project on
No, we can't, we can't legal.
Then what's the difference?
So the difference is meeting for the select board after town meeting. So there could be a week or two delay for Greg to come back with change orders. And that's where we're, all we're doing, we're not trying to fool town meeting into into this. It's actually the authority of the board. Once a contract's approved for eighty nine thousand, any change order above that contract actually has to be presented back to the board unless granting authority is given.
No, but no, no. Again, I don't want to drag this out. No change order is going to be requested until they're starting their work.
Correct.
And they're not starting their work until
No, it it can break ground the second you sign that contract tonight.
Right.
Right, the motion.
Based on the hundred thousand that they've already gotten.
Yeah. And then change orders. If you were to uh November first, I don't know what the first meeting is, like, might be the exact same motion.
All right, that that makes sense.
And then the reason that the, we're trying to expedite the change order process is actually just think of construction, kind of take the policy out of this. Is the second that we sign this contract, we're going to conduct a pre-con and try to get them in front of the winter. And if there's change orders that are impacted specifically excavation, so if they're only going to do excavate excavation for base bid, but we're already anticipating change orders, we can start to have that conversation so they prepare for the order operations.
Okay.
Which can then thus reduce the change.
I understand, I understand. Okay. So it has alleviated my concern over the Kate, is there something going on up here?
Yeah.
Oh.
John, go ahead.
This is John Dwyer, the chair of the Community Preservation Committee. The CPC has always been interested in having a full project there. I understand David's concern of protecting the historical attributes of the site. However, however, the CPC is also interested in easy public access to the site. And that's where the stone dust paths come in. And also that prevents growth on the path. And it also provides better access for anybody who's walking impaired. So we're we're in favor of that additional forty grand. Okay.
Thank you. David, any remaining, any remaining questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good.
Any remaining questions from anybody on Marble Farm? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Move to authorize how administrative to approve the contract with Belco Land Speaking LLC for Marble Farm Preservation in the amount of eighty six thousand, six hundred and seventy three dollars, and in subsequent change orders up to total appropriation.
Second.
All in favor? Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
I'm a yes. All right. David, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
David, that's
Thank you, David.
All right, uh, eleven B Complete Streets Program. So we had Justin here a few weeks ago in which he went over that program in detail. Uh, I think, Greg, do you want to give an update or should I go right to the DPW director on what what we've seen since that meeting in however many weeks?
Go forward, yeah, I'll take it as
Please, Justin.
So what's in front of you is obviously we discussed um in detail the process of the Complete Streets Program, the grant cycle, award of bid procurement, and now we're at the point where contracts uh, finalization with the awarded bidder is in front of the board for consideration at this point. The second contract documentation is executed if the board sees fit. We can start construction, which we have met with the um with the construction firm um potentially next week. Their concern, as we kind of alluded to on our last conversation about this, is the execution of the work, meaning the full completion, has to be done prior to January first. We're also contending, we're also contending with winter operations. So when you, when you kind of take the financial policy out of it, that's one aspect, but you're also talking about the real world aspect. And um in order to get this work done, uh, the contractor wants to start immediately so that they um get in front of the winters. So really only gives us a very shortened timeline of about a month to get this completed, um, submitted for full reimbursement for the street. Can it be done? Absolutely. It needs to be done in an expedited manner. There was some delay processes that take place for a number of reasons, but we're at the point now where we're also potentially award bid, I mean, excuse me, award contract, and our anticipation is that the contractor will be at the site next week.
And my my one question is, because this came up at the last meeting, once, once we approve this, we'll be able to line on a date, and then we wanted to let the residents know when construction would start in front of their houses. You give an overview that
We did try, we did coordinate with the contractor with the assumption that contract would be executed now, last week. Um, they have provided a date, time window of next week. So we actually, as a DPW, wrote up letters and hand-delivered them to the butters on Monday.
So they've already received notification in advance?
The estimated timetable of Yeah, we actually have an onsite meeting with the contractor tomorrow scheduled to go over the day-to-day activities and such, and kind of the process of that situation.
What is your anticipation on the amount of time that there will be disruption on the street for the repair, for the upgrade?
So um the anticipation will take each project because there are two projects. There are one bidder
I'm talking, I'm talking about Glendale.
That's why, yeah, I'm going to break it down. So Glendale Culver, the estimated timeline is about two weeks, but it's weather dependent. There's a lot of concrete work and that's based off of temperature. So um right now, the anticipation of that work is a two-week window for full completion on Glendale and Culver, and then Brown Street is a following two weeks. So immediately after that for another two weeks. So anticipation is a whole of the two projects.
Any other questions?
Are you anticipating um Glendale Culver to go first?
Absolutely.
Because because of the, because of the weather?
Yes.
Um, and so is there, you know, obviously, streets in that area are a little tight, so um how the obviously, the people will be able to get down their streets, emergency vehicles will be able to get access.
Absolutely. So that's the, that comes with the pre-construction. Why I said, this is part of the reason why sometimes it's very hard to give it a precise timeline until you actually award contract and have to pre-con. So that's the operational aspect of legitimate. So we engaged, um, that's why we actually have that scheduled for tomorrow in anticipation of the contract. Um, our recommendation is the contractors to use Culver, the end of Culver um for their staging area, so reducing any on-street parking overnight, things of that nature for the construction equipment. Um, the contractor is aware that they're to coordinate with residents on a daily basis um for impacts to their impediment of potential use. Understand that sidewalk aprons, meaning driveway aprons and sidewalk interconnect. So they have been informed that the residents need to have access to and from their work processes and things of that nature and be informed on a daily basis of how that process progresses going forward. All that will be completely verified tomorrow, but it's already been high-level pre-discussed, and that's why we were able to send out or hand-deliver the letters on.
Hey, Justin, uh, some of the residents have excess um vehicles, and obviously, they don't have room to park in the driveway, and they normally park them in the streets. Uh, what's the arrangement for that?
Well, go ahead, Justin.
So they have the ability to uh park in other locations. Uh, the library parking lot is a public, is a public parking lot without restrictions. Uh, the end of Culver is not normally utilized, so we can definitely coordinate with any impacts that specific residents have in regards to overnight parking. Um, but right now, we don't have an overnight parking ban, so typically, the work that's being performed, Armin, ends at a normal time of five o'clock, and then there's no construction activities after that. So if someone needs to park overnight adjacent to their um adjacent to their property, they can do so overnight, and then the impact of the construction start. Um, we did discuss with the contractor that seven o'clock is the earliest they can start and that they're to coordinate with a budding resident that they're doing work in front of ahead of time.
And and I'll know Chris raised a good point at the last time we discussed this topic, that during the winter, the residents need to find alternate parking regardless um due to the parking ban that we have in effect um to allow the class to get through. Any other questions?
From a practical standpoint, there's been a lot of buzz about the shallow, and I think that's the term, shallow, not the hollow.
Shallow.
Um, from a practical standpoint, when you have markings on the roadway that say bikes go this direction, uh, does it restrict bikes from going in the other direction?
No, so it's uh, it's a universal symbol, so MUTCD, which is municipal, it's uh, universal travel control devices. It's just the uh, universal engineering. Shallows represent what's called a shared situation. So remember I was discussing, like, a dedicated bike lane has a solid line, and you do see shallows within them, but those are dedicated, meaning legally, you can't drive into. Shallows, just straight shallows, is what is referred to as a shared situation, meaning you can't fit a dedicated bike lane in a vehicle to meet industry standards. So there is the acceptance within the industry for a shared situation. Kind of very similar to what you see now when you have a bike and a car and the road is narrow. They operate and you're not supposed to necessarily cross lines and all that. So there's nothing indicating that that can't happen. The idea behind shadows and the reason that Complete Streets really like to implement that is the idea and premise behind a complete street, pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular. And the symbol is just to identify the vehicles that there may be bicycles utilizing the street with them as well.
But the key point is, it is not in any way restrictive, bicycles going in one way.
Correct. Not at all. They have rules of the road, just like
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Please.
By that street did not get a notification, apparently don't. Um, there are notices on trees about a meeting to address the taking out of trees. That meeting is October sixth.
That's correct.
So you're saying the construction is going to start next week?
Yeah.
And we get to meet after the construction's already started, discuss taking out the tree?
So there are two separate statutes. So public shade tree law doesn't determine the same thing as construction. So the public shade tree law um indicates that we need a two-week window of notification through the public process, which is what we've done, legal ads, etc. So the public shade tree impact is still determined by the tree. The implication, that is correct, yeah, the implication of the work and adjacency to the critical mass of those trees is identified that the trees need to be removed. What the discussion will be is what is the potential remediation that the butters will see in the future? And that's what that discussion.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be able to discuss what to do after you are to remove the trees at the meeting, when the trees discuss. No.
So it's the remediation of what you would like to see after the tree is moved. They're being removed because they're going to be severely impacted. Yes.
Um, and my second question is again about the shallow, only going one way. There's no shallow on the other side. So the bikes are directed to go down the lane, the side of the road, and there's no lane to come back. So, I mean, obviously, the bikes, if you're trying to go in, have to come out the other side, they don't need the shovel. So why do we need all that? But again, that's part of the award. So you have to put it in there. Um, and they also cross directly in front of Lawrence. Lawrence Street does not have a stop sign. So instead of giving the bikers room in the middle of the road, man, you're now sending them directly in front of Lawrence.
Well, we can address the stop sign if that's missing.
Um, you're also taking two feet on that side of the road.
On what side?
On the side of the shallow because the orange paint now goes two feet in. So it's gone through people's lawns.
No, so, okay, so the markings that are out there, what's called Digsafe. So those are utility coordination marks, meaning there's a scope of work happening and the utilities like EverSource, the town. Come on and mark the locations of underground services. The painting that you're seeing on the ground is not an indication of an expansion of, of the project. The painting you're seeing on the ground is an identification for the contractor who will be doing excavation work. That there is the potential for underground utilities and to avoid that.
EverSource is yellow.
Correct.
Orange one is where it was elected?
Yes.
Because there are electric wires underneath their.
We don't control what EverSource says or doesn't say. It's not our asset.
So you're not going to take the two feet. Perfect, great. So my other question is, um, when this starts next week and we are not able to use driveways. You're telling us we should have to move our cars to. Right, if you're, if you're doing a construction, we can't get into our driveways. We have to move our cars at the end of Culver where you're directing, stretching people to put their cars?
The local access to how to link through the driveway should still be allowed.
Yes, so while the, so. The contractor will be doing work. Every time they come to a sidewalk, apron slash driveway. That will be pre-coordinated with that property owner in advance. So if they're going to work, let's just say that property owner doesn't leave and actually works for more. That coordination between the contractor and property owner will, um, decide on the time appropriate to perform the work in front of their, in front of their driveway. That is coordinated individually because everybody has individualistic needs. So if there is, we'll just take an example, one person that leaves and has a nine-to-five job. They will coordinate with the contractor and the contractor will not perform the work in front of their driveway apron until they have left for work. And it will be ready and prepared for them to return at that first window. All of that is pre-coordinated in advance with the contractor and each of butter and their individualistic needs. No, it's actually going to take place during the process. I understand that, just as, as a, as a reference.
So this, yeah, I'm assuming the painting's already happened, you've already awarded the contracts.
Contract hasn't been.
We're about to vote on it.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Well, so, well, remember it's a public right away and it's a Digsafe. So we performed Digsafe across. Yes, to the couple, that's them. Yep, calling Digsafe. They have to coordinate Digsafe. Digsafe can take weeks to perform their process.
They're certainly anticipating that the contract is going through. And just as with anybody, like if you get something done at your home. And you know you're going to get something, some work done, or you believe you're going to get some work done. Digsafe will come out and they'll paint, but that doesn't commit you to the job. Because it's then, it's pending on whether or not the first, the contractor can make it then, or when, if you sign your contract.
So this contract you're coming today, is this, this including the additional hundred ninety thousand dollars above the grant?
No, a hundred and ninety or a hundred and nineteen, uh, let me see. I.
A hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
No, no.
No, those are adults.
It is a hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Which was the free cash appropriation for roadwalks slash sidewalks. So that does fall into what we're trying to do, which is basically improve sidewalks, improve that intersection at Acton. And Glendale, um, and Brown Street.
And are there any plans to make the walk path that you guys are directing these people down to actually walkable?
Is that the actual, the blue green trail down that way?
River Walkway?
So that's something, actually, I was wondering if conservation, um, you know, one of those, uh, one of the projects that could be. Something that maybe Eagle Scouts could take a look at, something like that. I mean, there's always those opportunities. I know you guys have pointed that out, so I think it's a fantastic thing that we could possibly look into. Um, because we always are looking for more accessibility for those types of things.
Because David's point about the non-park, like Christmas Motors. I mean, this block trail is not walkable, basically, for anybody that you're driving down. So if you're putting evening sidewalks down for, for the people can actually, you know, use. It's again, kind of a waste of money.
Well, it's not ADA specific to the conservation trail. It's ADA for use anytime, twenty-four seven in both locations. It could be a feeder for the residents of that community to access the library appropriately. There's a number of ways that probably other ways are utilized. So the grant was awarded based on the fact that it was completing what they consider a gap in our system to a conservation rail trail. Uh, excuse me, not rail trail, conservation trail. Yeah, that was approved by Mass.
It's, it's very similar to, correct me, Justin, um, it would be. And I am talking out of school, but it would be very similar if you put a sign up that said, scare the road with bikes.
Correct.
It's kind of the exact same thing.
That is.
And so, and it would, it would meet the same standard, basically.
Bikers are gonna self-fall since security and they actually don't.
But we, we have to.
And that's engineering standard, so you're always going to have people question and that's okay. Industry standards and engineering standards do change. Right now, that is an industry standard that is reviewed by, uh, by honestly. The engineering field and world throughout the entire community, sometimes they're actually global. MUTCD standards are, are not just necessarily the country, they're actually global standards. So I'm sure that will continue to be explored and they are, uh. Evaluated consistently in controlled studies, so.
Any final questions?
No, I will make a motion to approve the agreement from Department of Public Works, Complete Streets Project Twenty Twenty Two Construction Contract Number thirteen fifty-sixty-three. Between the Town Manager and IW Harding Construction Company in the amount of four hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. And our next contract is for our DPW director, so, uh. Greg, would you like to give us a, an overview here?
Surprisingly, Justin's been with us for three years and, um, I know, actually went very fast. Um, so Justin joined us in two thousand nineteen. And, uh, about a year into my tenure here, and we're grateful to have him. Um, he's made a lot of progress in, uh. Thousand different projects, and I feel like on a regular basis, he's still putting out fires, strategic planning through the future, contacting the state agencies. Figuring out our crazy water system. Um, and, uh, and putting up with people like me who are asking him to repeat everything. So I, I very much appreciate the work that the body is brought to the town. Uh, over the last months, uh, we've been negotiating this, is, uh, is. A, a new contract, another three-year period, a little short of that because. Um, but I strongly recommend that the board consider the contract that's been negotiated to myself. And has been reviewed by town council and our HR manager. And, uh, town accountant, so I, I think it's been fully fleshed out. Justin's been agreeing with the terms. Um, and it, again, it's reflective of the value that he is both. Um, has brought already to the town, but, but it's certainly an investment that he can bring to the town through the public works. To play that it, that his department has throughout the town. I think it's a good contract and I, I recommend. Continued appointment and, and at the compensation.
Any questions or comments? All right. All right, fantastic. Well, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve the employment contract and employment agreement with Justin DeMarco for appointment as Director of Public Works. For term of September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five as presented.
Second.
It's gonna be hard if you're not in the room, Armand. All right, all. All in favor, uh, Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, uh, well, welcome again.
Well, I'd like to say thank you. I look forward to continuing in this, uh, role for the Town Manager. Um, I hope to consistently provide support to the board and the residents of this community. Help us move forward into the future, solving both the immediate issues in front of us while strategically planning and coordinating efficient, effective meeting. So I do appreciate this. Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are moving to item twelve, which is bleachers, again, this time, um, specifically covering the NOI that we had discussed earlier. So. This, well, I believe we already did the summary, um, do you want to just give us a quick?
I think, I think what we could do, I, we talked about this, but this, make sure I'm on the same page as all that, it's good for clarification.
Yeah.
Um.
Do we want to reword it is really the?
Yeah, potentially, but, but maybe we wait. So if, as I pointed out, that, that yes, the demo is third, but if, if we can get to them by the fourth. If the board, I know in your absence, sure, but if the board is willing to wait to see. What is the NOI going to be flushed out by the, by the, uh, school department as endorsed by the school committee on Thursday night? I could bring that to the board next week and then consider endorsing that.
So that basically we let the school committee bring the NOI forward and then we say, yes, we are in alignment with the school committee.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that strategy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And the, and the, the important thing is the NOI gets to the CPC and that will happen because of the school committee's deliberation.
And they know about it now, so.
Hi Natasha, how are you?
Good, I just wanted to share that I, I, I just emailed you, um, with the superintendent had, um. Forwarded us, which will be just deliberate on, so just for notice of, um. Intent, so you can have that for reading for next week. That's what the school committee will be discussing.
We will, very good. All right, all right. Um, all right, then no motion, any other comments, uh, on the bleachers as they relate to the NOI?
Only what I commented on earlier is that I. I want to make sure that whatever, whatever direction we go and we have a plan, specifically a funding plan. That doesn't cause angst as we move forward, so we can work on a. You know, my, my perspective is a longer-term plan, but stick to the plan and not. Bend the rules as we move along and say, oh, we can't go there because of X, Y, or Z. Have the plan and work it through and get the state funding that we might be able to get, get the, the town funding that we might be able to get. Get the, um, uh, local, um, you know, volunteer funding, whatever you call fundraising, funding. Um, and be able to use all of the levers and not just limit ourselves to. You know, one approach.
That'll go to my. Yeah, no, I, I'm in alignment. I, I'll just note that I think what we need to do is have more clarity from. The house doctor on that medium-term contract, because what, what I had asked is what the length of time was and whether that's two years, five years or ten years has a big impact. Long-term planning, so that's a, that's a conversation I think we're, we're well aware of. Um, and I'm, I'm sure the budget subcommittee, we think we'll be talking about this for. Possibly more than one meeting, so. Um, but I, I, I think I. Um, I actually think I'm in alignment with you that we, we will need to take a look at that and then set a long-term plan and make sure we have. Understanding of the fiscal implications of it and work with our, our partners from the FinCom, the school committee, the capital planning committee and the CPC. And, and others, as you mentioned, to, to drive a plan forward. All right, any other comments on? Twelve. All right, we are moving on to item thirteen, which is the warrant for our special town meeting on October twenty-fourth. Uh, Greg, do you want to give us an overview? I think we've, we've seen all the individual. Components of it, but the finance committee has now. Had an opportunity to provide comments as well.
That's true and recommendations.
And recommendations.
So what, and, and then there was one more change that happened late this afternoon, so I'll point that out, um, but it's, it's, it's. Housekeeping. So as, um, actually, this article, this, the articles in this warrant is mostly house. Uh, but you know, it's also progressing in the right direction for a lot of things that, that have already started. I'm just reviewing really quick, making sure that, that what the board sees is what I got from the finance committee, I believe it is. And, um, my memory serves correct, the finance committee did recommend all the articles. Uh, they provided comments for all of one, which I believe was the. Related article. Uh, from CBC, that's true, so I've just done a check and notes, yes, that forty thousand dollars, um. Requested appropriation from CBC Undesignated Reserve Fund. That finance committee has not submitted, um. Their comments, um. That might, I need to get proper clarification. This isn't going to the printers until tomorrow, but, so I need to get clarification because their comment was that. Finance committee will present a recommendation at a special time meeting, so perhaps I had it wrong that the finance committee had ordered, so I'll have to get them.
The finance committee has not recommended that yet, Greg.
The, the. Arm one, Alana?
Or has, has not voted on it or has not, has voted not to recommend.
We have not voted on it yet.
Yeah, not voted.
Okay.
Got it, got it, got it, thank you.
Alana, is that the only one you have not voted on?
Correct.
Thanks.
Yeah, very good, thank you, Delana. The other, the other kind of like, uh, last minute, so to speak, change. Um, was the transfer of marijuana. Number five. That's fine, that's right, so page nine. So through the, uh, recommendation of the finance committee to take a look at the, uh. You know, the appropriation and what kind of. No, I'm mistaken. I am mistaken, I apologize. I'm all over these guys, it's kind of very, I am, I'm. Talking about article two, the free cash certification, no, I'm not.
Second.
The bleachers, that was not nearly what we thought.
All right, I'm back on it, back on it. Article seven, the redesignation of the free cash appropriation for bleachers. Okay, so Alana and through the finance committee had, had said that, um, that there was some confusion about whether it's appropriation or a transfer, etc. Um, and so I reached out to the town council and they, they actually agrees that it's not appropriation, it's just a transfer. Um, so I need to edit this and I think I put that to the first, I think, in the, in the, in the packet as well. But I need to edit this according to town council's advice, which is it's a transfer, it's not appropriation, it's already been appropriated. Um, and so the wording is a little bit different.
By the appreciation, none.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Should the article title be transfer free cash appropriation for bleachers repairs?
I, I could do.
The redesignate one?
So it's redesigned, yeah.
That's true, I, I guess that's true. I mean, I, when I wrote the title, again, it was to sort of like capture the essence of it, um. Um, so yeah, we could, we could retitle it if you think that's a good idea. We could just say transferred. But it's, but we, in essence, we are redesignating.
Yeah, and then it says below to see if the town will vote to transfer from.
Right.
To, yeah.
I could change the title.
Yeah, probably, transfer. Free cash, what do you think?
Might as well be safe and keep it consistent.
Okay.
All right. Um, any other updates?
No, so, um. Uh, I have the vendor for printing the warrant, um, and do a little legwork because I don't have Becky, so, um. Got that figured out and, um, and then so, uh. You know, should be, no, I'm gonna do one last pass. If anyone wants to do any last passes, I will welcome that. Um, because I looked at this many times and as you tell, I'm already confused, but I will, will look at it again before this.
Make school, make sure the school line item gets into the.
Oh, two, come on.
I made my son add up all the numbers you have.
I'm joking, but.
Did he?
He did.
Is it good?
Relative to the meeting itself, I, I assume you've been in contact with the moderator.
Yes.
It's an indoor meeting, obviously, and it's, um, following the old-time rules of, um. Of indoor meetings. So I assume we will assign, um. Articles to each of us.
Uh, yes.
We have a month still, so, um, just put it on the agenda for, you know, maybe, maybe even the next meeting.
Yeah, sure.
Once he, we have it in hand.
I, I got a quick question, Greg. Um, how are we planning on getting the copies of warrants to those that don't get Action Unlimited delivered to their homes anymore?
So I, I asked, I should eliminate to increase the routes. So, um, I got a quote for all. Though, though all the town, you're right, um, Action Unlimited has, has adjusted their business approach to the town. They don't do about, it's about, about eleven hundred, uh. Households that they don't do, but I asked for a quote if they could put those two routes back on.
Just for this?
For this.
Yeah.
So it's not, so, um, just on the topic I'm, I can project up. Um, you know, a lot of frustration came from residents that wanted. You know, a lot of frustration came from residents that wanted to get the the council on aging newsletter. Actually, it's not providing, you know, there, besides this exception that I'm going to pay them for. They've changed the rest. And so the the senior, you know, you know, the council on aging newsletter was not getting to all eleven hundred. Those eleven hundred residents. So Amy Lovelace is considering alternatives, like maybe not, is it worth it to? You, you know, we're paying action unlimited to 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 distribute the council on aging newsletters presumably to the whole town, but it's not actually. Is that worth it? Is that worth it? So we're asking all those questions. And I just kind of clarify one more point.
Yes.
On that particular note about council on aging newsletter, corner households, she can use, she's looking, Amy Lovelace is looking at the census data to see if that could. Point, then you can do more direct mailing potentially instead of just doing wide. Of course, that's. Not ideal, right? Because it was a lot of advantages having that that newsletter going out townwide. I'd like, I'd like to know that my newsletter, my little articles get read by everybody, but if it's going to go a little more pointed and maybe save us some money. It's going to those specific households that do meet their criteria for the council on aging. And that that could be.
So it's only limited to households with a senior, right?
No, no, I I don't know exactly what the criteria would be, but but whatever the appropriate audience would be, but it it may not be all. Forty-five, five thousand households.
I like it.
I know, I know that Amy, Amy's looking. I know that Amy's looking at several options, including, I think, talking to see if there's a. Another possibility of distribution, but I know she's looking at several options.
Yeah, and and yeah, it might be a matter of cost.
Yeah.
Any questions on the warrant? All right, I will accept a motion. Whoever makes a motion could just note the wording change. On article seven from redesignate to transfer in the title.
Oh. I'll move to approve the warrant for special town meeting October twenty fourth, twenty twenty-two with the edit. Transfer as opposed to redesignate in article seven. Otherwise, that as presented. Other as a use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor? Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Select board goals. It is getting a little late, I think, Greg, if I'm not mistaken, we have a relatively light agenda next week.
You won't be here.
I will not be here. That's fair. I just, I'm just saying, do we want to transfer this one to next week and cover it then? I can certainly give my input, which I did at the initial goal setting meeting.
But I believe. It is lighter than tonight.
Or do we want to plow through?
Nah, I'm good with.
Either way.
All right, let's, let's go, let's go next week. I don't think. All right, very good. Then we will move on to correspondences. And.
Oh, no, sorry.
Don't worry.
Correspondence A through P as shown.
Second.
Any comments on the correspondences? All right, then I will take a vote. Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Now we will move on to minutes and we have two sets. I'll accept a motion. Or if somebody wants to do them together.
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of September seventh and September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two as shown.
Second.
Any comments on the minutes either set? All right, Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Town administrator report. You, yes, where are we going?
Correspondence, just a quick question regarding the ever source customer handout for gas costs and system.
Yeah.
Have we made it, and forgive me, I have not been on the website, but have we made an attempt to kind of get that word out to people? Is that, or could we put it on the website or is there something? Maybe give it to Amy Lovelace, you know, the COA.
This isn't limited to guest seniors.
No, 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 that's why I would like doing both, doing like, put it on the website for for anybody and then also. Thank you.
No worries. Town administrator report.
Okay. Uh, thanks so much. Highlighted a couple of things. Angie Merriman is retiring next week. It's gonna be a big change in town, but we are engaged with her to see, you know, like job advertisement, job description. Essentially for private consultations, so we can keep that ball moving. It is manifest this weekend, so the town departments have been been supportive of that and. Very much forward to it. Town offices will be closed on October tenth and recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Special time meeting is coming up. I also want to encourage the public to. Participate in the Powder Mill Road. I'm not going to say this right, the Powder Mill Road corridor. Study phase two. And there's a couple of public warrants that they can, that they can tend to participate in. Tomorrow, very good. Again, twenty seven eighty thirty. And. I'm tired, girl, so I think that's it. I don't want to take any more of your time, but I do encourage public to look at the town minister's report. It's on the website. And helpful links on it, beautiful pictures. So thank you for all the town staff for your contribution. Take any questions again.
Any questions on the town administrator report?
None for me.
Okay, we'll move on to the chair report. Just one thing for me. I've been working with the sustainability committee to try to, they've done a lot of great work connecting with Acton and and other places to. Look at some of the net zero school designs and work with the sustainability subcommittee of Green Meadow. And I was wondering, Chris and Justine, if you could help with. Few items to make the meetings more accessible to the public who are are looking to participate for both the. Both the Green Meadow School Committee meetings and the Sustainability Subcommittee meetings. I think the first is the last minutes that are posted are from March. For the overall group, and if we could get the minutes updated more frequently and posted.
Sorry about that.
The second is if. I I believe a lot of the postings come, forty-eight hour posting, if the meetings could be put up, at least the dates, I know the agendas aren't ready, but. I believe in most cases, the dates are aligned well before the forty-eight hour posting notice. So the dates of those meetings. Could be even more prominent or put up somewhere. I think that would help as well.
I'm not, I'm, I I'm making a face and I recognize I'm making a face. I'm just trying to figure out how that, because I know that. And Greg, I might need some help here. I know that the, I I know that the schools handle the posting of the agenda for that. So I don't know, is there a mechanism to kind of? Put a date on the. Town calendar anyway.
On the website for the Green Meadow School Project, just saying our next meeting is scheduled for.
That's what we do for the slide board.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so update the website.
You don't, you don't want to vote on the meeting schedule because then you you had to vote to change it, but just when, when the next one's coming up.
The problem with that committee is it's. It's not like that because it's the last almost long, we had two things, so I would try this two things, so. You know, it's always different. It's not, it's not, it's not as set as. FinCom meets these days, select board meets these days, school group meets those days. That committee is kind of, you know, it's, it's all over the map because you're dealing with us. And you're also dealing with the, you know, the the project managers and all the all the rest that are involved. So it's, it's hardly a set schedule, but. We can ask Colleen to post it when she knows.
Yeah, that that's understood. I think what's happening now, though, is the only way you would know when those meetings are happening, if you're following the posting notices, which is only forty-eight hours. So any, any additional.
We're going to need some time and.
Right, so. I'm not forty-eight hours, so to get those dates up and and publicized that people are interested in particular topics. And then the third one was, because I know, you know, especially for the daytime on the subcommittee meetings, but also on the evening ones, it's hard for people to make and they still have an interest. So is it possible to record those meetings and post them so that people have an understanding of? How the discussions are going. For such a major committee meeting that's dealing with the tens of millions of dollars, I think that's a important enough one that it raises the threshold that we should make that attempt.
Okay, I, Greg?
No, we could. So, so I, as I, so Jeff has the same thing, and I've committed a lot of these. Requests.
To Jeff, right? Okay, right, right, right.
And he's been, he's been receptive, you know, like he is, in my impression. But as I explained to 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 Jeff, like, my role is the chief of industry of officer, so I say, as long as you're a Biden, I hope. Pretty heads off. I think that's, that's the point. If the, if the building. Committee chair wants to report the major otherwise, if he wants to look to future scheduling.
Okay. Yeah, so, so I think that, so. So I appreciate that you're bringing it to Chris and I. But also, Chris and I. Even though we're select board members, we do still have to defer to the chair of that committee. So, but we could definitely bring all of this up to the chair and and see whether, I don't know, I honestly don't know how it's decided whether or not. A meeting is recorded or not, so I don't know if that's something that the committee would vote on, or if it was just that the chair could just decide to vote on it. But yeah, I can definitely bring it forward.
And then usually the chair takes actions.
Yeah, do it.
Do, do it and then send it over to. Yeah, I mean, at least that's what happens.
There's more, okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, all right.
I I think those three would go a long way to doing what we had discussed a month ago, or whenever that conversation was about, you know, increasing transparency and. Getting the word out about what the committee is doing.
What it's doing.
Yeah. And the last note, I'm still having trouble understanding how the sustainability decisions will be made in the end, even with the the recent formation of that committee. But I'll I'll continue to work with that.
They addressed some of that in the last meeting.
So.
With the.
Yeah.
With. My.
Right. I mean, I think, to be honest, I think that it is. Input from everybody about everything, and I think they're taking sustainability input. And then at. And again, I am talking completely out of school, but this is my interpretation of what's happening.
It is a school building.
But. You know, and then from there, we're going to find what that. Happy medium is for a new school building, including sustainability goals, including cost, including. Accessibility, including community input, all, I think ideally that's encompassing all of that. So we did get the, we did get the sustainability goals. My personal concern about some of about them without knowing, and again, I admit that I don't know, but my, my bottom line concern. For a lot of everything is is the cost of the project. So I just want to make sure whatever we're promising or we're committing to is something that we can afford. But that, and that's, so that's my three cents on that.
And all, one thing I will note is that the cost of these technologies have changed so rapidly, even the last, just like, let's say, five years. That a lot of things that were not, didn't make cost wise sense now do, and and we talked to. And what happens is even in some cases where the installation cost may be a little higher, the operational cost is so lower that you pay it off before. The end of a bond, so your day one cost is lower, even though your installation cost is higher, because that's how much lower the operational cost is. I just want to make sure that we were running all those numbers correctly and we have a good understanding. We're not missing opportunity to actually save some costs. By using some of these technologies.
Can we put money from operational back into paying off the bond though?
What's that? It may be, it may be a higher bond cost, but your operational cost is so much lower that overall you have to pay less to make on the total operational and. Cost for the project.
Okay, all right.
You're saving so much on the maintenance of building day one. That if we're looking at it as a holistic fiscal picture, we should be willing to pay the extra installation.
Okay, but for tax dollars, my tax dollars.
Will change.
It would still be the. Still be the increased amount.
Right, we we have control to do with the savings on the operational cost, because that would be from, well, presumably the school budget. Well, that's, that's a different conversation. Clear understanding of all those factors.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that that we we have all of those discussions properly and and soon, given how. Fast we know the MSBA timelines are.
Yes, and I I and and back to your original comment about the sustainability. So they have been, the subcommittee has been meeting, correct?
Uh, yeah, I understand twice, but I I'm just making sure that they're following proper meeting hygiene, so.
Yeah, and I think that they were meeting with, if I remember the the meeting, the last meeting correctly, I think they were meeting with EverSource.
Yes, and I.
So, yeah, okay.
That's my, I wouldn't have that meeting, but that's my understanding.
Okay, all right. So they are, they definitely are moving forward as far as that part goes, but, okay, yeah.
Okay, that's all for me for a term. Uh, Chris, or member reports.
Greg, have you heard from anybody from the main and human relations committee about trash?
No.
Because it's been on the last four agendas, trash tickets and trash and. Uh, one of the, one of the members of the committee was supposed to have reached out to you. You know, asked to be part of the trash. Committee type of thing.
Oh.
And I'm pretty sure that that just won't happen, but it comes up every other time, but I, to be perfectly honest, I don't know. It comes up on the agenda and. I have no idea why it's on the agenda, that particular agenda, but. It's the last, the last conversation was that one of the meeting members had had an interest in the trash deck, is they have moved on their family. What about it?
We've taken a couple of.
I'll just check back again later, but someone from that committee wanted to be involved in the, you know, the the discussion in that was, you know. They've had over two months to. Come find you, so.
Oh, I mean, I also have a hundred and twelve hundred events, so. But it might be in there, but I'll I'll try to get back to.
Trust me.
I'll also note that there's a.
I'm also, that was, I said that question, I didn't know.
Just to follow up, I got an email from the MMA, they're going to have a seminar, when, but coming up exactly on this topic and they've got, I don't know, panel of speakers. So I saw that come into my.
Yes.
That webinar. Seems pretty timely. Uh, because I've seen a few MMA ones come right after we discussion, it's gonna, I'm like, come on. Webinar and track, because we're not the only community that's just in this, facing these challenges, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that that was timely, and I just wanted to make sure that we saw that.
But Nata is still looking for a chair.
I've already got a community. All right, Justine.
Yeah, I I'm good right now.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. First off, this weekend, my neighborhood had a its annual neighborhood party and. The highlight for the children, the young, really young ones, was the firefighters who came up with the truck and it was. To see that, I mean, literally, the smiles on the kids faces, but more so, the interaction between the firefighters and the kids. Was really great to see. They handed them hats and they put them up there for photographs and everything else, really great. That's what community policing and firefighting and public safety is all about, and they're doing a great job and I want to acknowledge that. Affordable Housing Trust is meeting tomorrow evening for anybody who is interested in a boring two hour meeting that does talk and does talk.
And important.
Important topics. But it is not sexy in as much as this meeting is. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend this weekend. The annual, the Providence College has its, its parents weekend on the first weekend in October. But I will be attending a concert, and please tell me if you've ever heard of this artist. A concert being performed at the Providence Civic Center, which is now called something else. By a guy named Khalid.
Yeah, Khalid, yeah.
Khalid. Uh, so I'm very much looking forward to seeing Khalid this weekend instead of major event.
Maybe you can get him to play.
Go for it. Yeah, I doubt it. But anyway, that I think is it for me.
All right, so David is going to go see DJ Khalid in a little. Yes.
You're gonna have a good time. He's good.
All right, Armin, please go ahead.
All right, just a few things. So probably most of you know that I'm involved with three different groups in town and. We're meeting on ongoing basis. One of them is the marketing managed working group, and I know that Bob McCarthy met with. Megan and to with Greg. And. He came back to us. We're going to be meeting on Monday again. Uh, we're going to be putting together a strategy in how to promote and market mainards. Not only to the townspeople businesses, but also to the outside world and how to attract businesses. So hopefully we could help out. The townspeople businesses, but also to the outside world and how to attract businesses. So hopefully we could help out, you know, the town hall and and in these efforts. The second group that we're constantly meeting with is the Cultural District Working Group, which eventually it will. Be not eliminated, but we'll, we'll stop after January, because we're putting three subcommittees in place and those three subcommittees will be continuously working under the umbrella of the. Cultural Council, but at the same time aligned with E D C. Same thing, by the way, with the marketing group. They're gonna be aligned with E D C also once E D C starts getting going again. The third group that I'm meeting with on ongoing basis, the Senior Center Focus Group, and last. Meeting, we had Kate Hogan as our guest speaker. She was so great in giving us some ideas and what can we do to, you know, move this forward? One of the other ideas that came out of that meeting is possibly looking at a long term, combining community center, senior center. This was discussed years ago. There was a report regarding that. But for now, we're looking at the, you know, short term options. I made that presentation to Council on Aging at the last meeting. Amy had me talking in front of them and they're very happy with some of the, you know, ideas and 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 things that we're coming up with. And the last piece, I'm sure a lot of you know, on September the seventeenth, it was the art space inside out exhibit and. Jeff did a fantastic job. From what I heard, I would came a little later that day and doing a great presentation and Kate also spoke. And that was the kickoff to their capital campaign, which is called Art Space Refrained. And they have a ambitious goal of raising about a hundred, I'm, I'm sorry, one point two million. And right now they're, they raised about seven hundred thousand. That's combined, combined with grants and and the federal and state and any other private donations. They're doing a nice job of raising some money. And a lot of you probably know that this, one of these floors is completed and they're trying to raise money to complete the second floor, so. That's where they are right now. I'm hoping that we do come to some kind of conclusion regarding the lease. And it is a, an amicable one. We also have to always think, I know that a lot of people may not realize. The intrinsic value that that the art space brings to the community at large. And how it helps with the cultural district and how it helps with the economy. So we have to think long term about what, what that. You know, art space does for us and if. Some of you probably weren't there on the seventeenth, but they had a very nice turnout. Yeah, the weather helped. So let's keep in mind that. This organization has done some good things for the town and they'll continue doing some more things and they are gonna make some improvements and changes to hope. Become a little bit more involved so that the town could see the value that they bring to the, to the community at large. And in regards to cultural, this coming Sunday, as you know, there's a porch fest going on. And the last stop for the porch fest is gonna be at the sanctuary. So hopefully, I'm gonna be back in town, so I'm gonna go to see if I could participate in and take part in some of these, you know, you know, like. Beautiful activities that we have in town right now. So anyway, that's all, that's all I have.
Been busy. Very good. And that, that reminds me, in addition to the art space, I think I missed you there, Armin, but I did get a chance to attend the Aspid Valley Chamber of Commerce slash.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And that was, that was nice to see that combination there and Bill Thornley and Sam Cormick are the new N B A. Chair, they're co-chairs, I suppose, and they, they both spoke and had a very nice forward looking vision and so hopefully we'll bring some new energy to that body.
Yeah, let's hope so.
Very good. Alright, any other? Or member reports? Very good. Then we can move to adjournment. Our next meeting is one week from tonight. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Salute. Second.
All in favor? Chris? Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Armand?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Good night, everybody.